I'm going to call this meeting with Gloucester School Committee to order. It's December 16th, 2020. And I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. It will be recorded and that recording will be available on the city's website. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap and press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. So Maria, can we have a roll call for attendance?
Kathy Clancy.
President.
Ms. Vazza.
You muted, Joel. We saw your lips move, though.
Present.
Chairman Pope.
Here.
Ms. Prince.
Here.
Mayor Taken.
Here.
Ms. Watson.
Here.
And Ms. Wiesen is not here yet.
She'll be late. She told me she'd be late, so. Moving on, we'll wave the flag. Oral communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, they will have up to three minutes to speak. Okay, I'm supposed to read this, and I was just making it up here. Oral communication shall be allowed any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes, such as each, and shall submit a copy of their prepared communications to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. That being said, do we have? That's not what I want. Attendees. Mary Ann, you have your hand up.
Hi. Can you handle?
Yes, we can.
Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Montplaisan Avenue. I just wanted to take the moment to recognize the remote academy of teachers, teachers that my two granddaughters attend class with every day. I'm here with him five days a week, first grader and a fourth grader, while my daughter is home remote teaching as well. And I wrote a small note to Mr. Lummis a couple of weeks ago. I wanted to acknowledge the two, the first and the fourth grade teachers. I can only speak for them because the other teachers that I see every day. And I was extremely worried the first week of school. How am I going to do this with a fourth grader, a first grader, and a four-year-old also here with me? And after the first week, all my worries vanished very quickly. The teachers are amazing. They keep my first and fourth grade granddaughters fully engaged all day, every day. And as we can see, December is here, almost the Christmas break. And I am really happy to report that these kids are very, very happy. And above all, they are really learning. So I just want to shout out also to Beth Goldberg and Heather Goolsbee and Sophia Smith, who's a new teacher. My hat is off to each and every one of them. It's remarkable to see what they have done and what these little, little children have accomplished and what they're capable of. So I just wanted to go on record that I think they're doing a wonderful job, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Ann. It's always good to get good feedback. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak under oral communications? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. What is next? Comments from the chairperson, I'm going to reserve that for recognitions. Are there any recognitions? Samantha?
Thank you. So in a similar vein to Mary Ann, I've talked to quite a few friends who've had, who had their kids in school but who have had to stay out because of a sickness or because they're a close contact, and they have nothing but good things to say about the outreach that the teachers have made to them and to their students. And they feel very supported during that time, having their kids home. So I just wanted to recognize those teachers for doing that hard work.
Anybody else? Mayor Taken.
Okay, I want to acknowledge the ESL Sabrina Giordano, Mimi, or I'm sorry, Millie, for going beyond. We have some families sometimes that are under quarantine and to go beyond to find them stuff that they wouldn't know existed in our community or could have fell through the crack. It's not up to the teacher to do all of the stuff that they were doing, but they do, and most of our teachers do. So kudos to the teacher. I know it's kind of hot because usually when you're in a classroom, you know, weekends come and bring, send some extra crackers at home, some other things. But you know what? I really want to thank everyone because everyone is really jumping on board and going that little extra. And they don't have to. But you know, it's kind of nice, too, when you have someone that reaches out and someone says, you know, Sabrina delivered food, she didn't have to, or Millie did this one, or they're giving us recognition on this, or they're asking for this, you know, instead of saying, well, why aren't we doing this? They, you know what? They, they went and did and said, what else can we do to help? And so that's what we need because everyone needs to, I mean, we're all exhausted. I mean, everyone says, oh, we're going to have a little break, and we're going, well, this has been going on since March, and it hasn't really stopped. And here we go again. And so, you know, I applaud everyone. It's, it's not easy. And everyone's hoping for snow, and I wish you all do Angels in the Snow tomorrow and all play in the snow. But the ones who still have the back-to-back Zooms and work and stuff will still do it. But also, I really, really need to tell Ben this, that a lot are, and no offense to anyone, and no offense to past, but they said, you know, Ben, the transparency and what you don't know, you try to learn and go and reach out to everyone and be in there and be presentable and reachable and working with the Board of Health and doing what you think you can. And it's been great. And I'm, Mildred Zink's on there, so thank you, Mildred, Millie. It's great. I mean, you know, we all have to work together, and it's great that instead of saying, you know, you really should be doing this, and you can't do that, just like Mary Ann said about, because I don't know about, you know, the teachers that are working through remote. I don't have no idea. So when you hear that from someone, to say thank you to someone, you know, it's really nice to hear, me as a mayor side, because it's nice to see that everyone's working together. I mean, no matter what it is, it's, we're trying to bring us in safety forward. So it's nice to hear. So I just wanted to let you know, too, that people are doing, going beyond, and our teachers are going beyond, and they are working and they are tired, but they still, you know what? Can I have that, a little bit of that Energizer battery that some of you have? Caffeine's not working for me anymore. I think I, I'm used to it. But I want to thank you. And if I don't tell you enough, everyone, thank you. And if I haven't said it before, you know, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, but I'm thankful. You know, for me, it's Thanksgiving again. I'm thankful that we're all in this together because I couldn't ask for a better team. So thank you.
Thank you. Joel?
Thanks. I'll be quick. Just to piggyback on Mary Ann, you know, the, the work that she was thanking the teachers for is only possible thanks to people like Mary Ann, other family members who have stepped up to help with kids who are home. So just, you know, we should probably recognize also the parents, the grandparents, the aunts, the uncles, the friends, everyone who is making it possible for the children who are home to get stuff done while they are home, because it certainly is a heavy load for them as well. So thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you, everybody else, and Mary Ann's position. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Good point, Joel. Anybody else? I'd just like to say that we're, we're very, very proud of the administration, the principals, the teachers, the nurses, the educational support professionals, the cafeteria workers, the bus drivers that have enabled this community to have just completed the 61st day of students in class, which is something that realistically, not a lot of communities in the state can say that they've done. And we should be very proud. We are very proud of you, and we're very thankful to all of you for the hard work. I know it's not easy, but it, it's good work and it's necessary work, and the students, the children benefit. So thank you. We will move on to the next item, which is our student advisory council. Megan?
Hi. Hi, everyone. COVID has definitely hit hard for everyone in our community, in our schools, but I would like to say GHS has been doing a very, very great job trying to keep spirit alive, helping the kids as much as possible. Has just been great. So with that, recently, we did what's called Deck the Halls. We're doing a wrapping paper contest. Each homeroom got assigned a homeroom door. They get to decorate the door however, however they'd like, wrapping paper, tissue paper, you know, whatever, make it look festive, you know, bring some spirit into the place. And then the winner will actually get a prize. We don't know what the prize is yet, but it's just fun getting us all together, making us work together as a team, but still being safe and spaced. Also, every Thursday, we do an ugly sweater day. Now, again, just to bring some cheer into the day. My class, the senior class of 2021, is raffling off Gloucesteropoly boards. There'll be two winners pulled on December 22nd. Anyone in the class of 2021 Student Council will be selling their Apple tickets for $10 each. Our new field house is being used finally. It's amazing. It looks beautiful because basketball is underway. The team is starting to practice, starting to get out on the court. Good. With NHS, the tutoring has really been picking up. You know, it's really hard for students to come and ask for help and say they need the help, but tutoring has been doing great. They've been having a lot of students come, and it's amazing. Also, with class meetings for Student Council of all the ages, all the grades, they've been meeting via Zoom or Google Meet, whoever. The advisors want to do it, but they have been meeting, trying to help the school, help the students, you know, however. For yearbook, the seniors got all their photos taken and the superlatives done. So we got that done and out of the way. A student from Rockport actually reached out to us to do a Rock the Sock Drive for the homeless. The student at Rockport has collected over 700 pairs of socks for the homeless that will be donated. They asked if we could help participate. I believe we started Monday, and we already have 30 pairs, which isn't a lot compared to the 700, but we're doing the best we can to help. And then finally, Ms. Finacy, who is the class advisor for the class of 2024, would like to make a huge thank you to the O'Malley PTO for helping fundraise for their class trip that got canceled, and their money that got raised will be put towards their prom and any other class needs.
Thank you. Any questions? Kathy?
Megan, you said that the tutoring is really ramping up and that a lot of people are participating. How do you try, how do the members of NHS try to reach out to students so they can put, you know, recruit people that clearly could benefit from, you know, from either one subject, one part of a subject? So how does that usually work, given, you know, how did you feel when you were a freshman and sophomore? And so what is the average experience that makes that most successful for those who need the tutoring?
Yeah, so to get the kids aware, every day in our morning and afternoon announcements, it said tutoring is held in the tutoring room. I believe it's 1214. And then there's always someone who's in charge of tutoring. So for our year, it's Ryan Bergen. He has all the contact info, and he's in charge of everything. So you can contact him, or the teachers will contact him and say, you know, hey, this student might need some help in whatever subject, and he'll do his best job to pair the student with whoever the best tutor would be, or, you know, whatever. So we always put them on the announcement so students know. But then also, again, teachers will say, hey, either contact Ryan, or if you don't feel comfortable, I can contact him for you, and we'll get you paired up. And they honestly, they do a really good job because it can be intimidating, especially as a freshman, to go in and be vulnerable to a senior, like, you know, it's just high school, you know, cliches. So, but they do, they do a very good job. They make you feel very welcomed and appreciated. So that's good.
Good. I have a follow-up question.
Yeah.
Where do you get your ugly sweaters? Who do you borrow them from?
Honestly, kids have been borrowing them. It's just, it is, but it's so funny to, like, just walk down the halls and see everyone all decked out. You know, some people take it as far as, like, putting stuff in their hair. It's, it's really fun. It just makes us feel back to normal.
Thank you very much. Any other questions before we move on? Well, thank you, Megan, and have a good snow day tomorrow.
Hey, Megan, this sweater you borrowed from me, I didn't know it was ugly.
Megan, I have a question for you before you go. I don't know if anyone saw my hand up. Are you still there?
Yeah.
Because I can't see Megan.
She's still there.
Megan, where do we go? If someone wants to donate socks, where do they bring them?
So for GHS, it's Avery Smith. She is a senior at the high school. If you can't get in contact her at all, you can just drop them off either at the guidance office or the main, main office, and they'll get it to her to get it donated and get in touch with the Rockport kids. So just the main office.
Great. Thank you so much.
Of course. Yep, there's a box where you'd see.
Okay, good. Excellent. So shall we move on to the consent agenda? Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to remove for either further discussion or correction? Joel? Frozen there. Well, we'll move on to Melissa.
So I just have a question about something on the agenda. I don't know that I need to remove it, and I didn't know how you wanted to address that.
See if we can answer the question.
So on the donation to the middle school PTO, because the class of 2024 is not going to Washington DC, has there been any conversation about them going next year as an older age? You know what I mean? They didn't get to go in their regular grade year, but are they, is there no consideration for attempting that trip? Just because of all the benefits from it, I was hoping they would still go.
I don't know the answer to that. Does anybody else?
I don't. Lynn, Lynn might, if she's available.
Yeah, I can just chime in a little bit. Last year, when we were going through the whole cancellation process, I did have a very short conversation with James Cook about that. And he felt that the ninth grade had a lot of things on their agenda that would prohibit bringing something that large into their year. I suspect that no one, and I know, including me, has given much of any thought to things like that this year. So I'm sure that that thought hasn't gone any farther, but it, it didn't feel like it was going to be workable for the, for the high school.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other items? Joel had his hand up, but now he's disappeared.
I can move to approve the consent agenda unless you want to wait for Joel to come back.
Well, I don't even see him now. He's, he froze, and then he, then he disappeared.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Okay, we, the consent agenda has been, and will certainly allow him to discuss any, anything that he'd like to discuss about the consent agenda when he comes back. But the consent agenda has been voted, no, it hasn't been voted, it's been moved and seconded. Maria, we need a roll call vote.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously. We'll move on to the deliberations on educational issues and the superintendent's report, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Lummis.
Hi, folks. Good evening. I will present, I will get to a presentation in a moment. What I first want to do, though, is a couple of things. It's, I think, very appropriate tonight that Ms. Boucher offered thanks to our remote learning teachers. I'll give you an update on some of the work they've been doing recently, also Lisa McManus on the call, who's our English language education, remote learning teacher. And then also, really wonderful that, that Mayor Taken acknowledged both Millie Zink and Sabrina Giordano for all of their work, because we're going to really focus tonight also on our EL learners, or educators, learners and their, and their families and the support and instruction that we're doing. So just really great. I also want to just point out something I really appreciate about Gloucester, and that's just what we, we saw tonight, is whether it's members of the public or the mayor or mayors of this committee, you know, acknowledging and appreciating the great work that's going on and then tremendous efforts being put out by everybody. A lot of communities are having a very difficult time right now, are focused on their schools. And while we're challenged, we're doing a great job, and I think everyone appreciates that, and that's, and we're coming together around them instead, instead of being split apart. And that is a testament to this community and everyone on, everyone, as Joel said, parents, families, our staff, school committee, our school leaders certainly coming together. And it is no small thing, because many communities are having a very, very difficult time right now, are really at odds. So I just applaud this community. I'm really, really appreciative and glad to be part of it. And, and it has, this city has tremendous strength, and it's something I did not know before I got here, but it is, it comes through every day. So just moving on to a few important things here. Here's our, let me share my screen so folks can see it. You can see it, and then also, folks at home can see it. I trust you can see a presentation now. Great, thank you, Samantha. So I always say this, that our, our job here, primary objective is to safely educate in our schools and remotely as many students as we can in in-person school settings and maximize their learning also remotely to address our students' full needs and support our community and family needs. We'll give a quick, quick update on teaching and learning. We'll give a COVID update from the schools, and then Karen Carroll is with us from the Gloucester Department of Health to give us an update on how the city's doing. We'll focus on English learners, as I mentioned, and English learner education. And then later tonight, we'll, I'll go, come back, and we'll talk about the, an update on the, on the building project. So one, a couple of quick highlights. Jonathan Pope already stole the thunder, stole the headline, which is 61 Days in School, which is just fantastic work, as we've talked about already. Just a couple of quick highlights. Last week, a few of the remote learning teachers, this is K-5 I'm talking about, Kim Lacoste, Taryn Gracia, and Stacy Alexander, really did a great thing. They were there to present to all of, all of our many, many, over 100 K-5 teachers to share what they've been doing in the Remote Learning Academy since the beginning of the year. You know, we really have folks now, whether it's paraprofessionals like Heather Goolsbee, or whether it's our, you know, K-5 remote learning teachers, or paraprofessionals, or Lisa McManus, or EL teacher, or special education teachers in our Remote Learning Academy, who've been doing this every day since September. And the amount of expertise and knowledge they have gained and learned and, and just, you know, come up with has been fantastic. And so they're a real resource to our other teachers now, just like their remote learning teachers are at the middle school and also the high school for when, when or if we have to go fully remote. So last week, Kim, Taryn, Stacy gave a presentation to about 100 K-5 teachers on strategies, resources, schedules they've been using all year, and just great turnout, great interest in that for what all they, for their, what they've learned and their expertise. And then they went above and beyond, which is they offered to provide, you know, continued drop in support, like, you know, through office hours for their colleagues. So it's just an example of the expertise that we have here, how people really chip in, throw in, help out their colleagues, and then they're, they're there for them again and again, whether it's colleagues, you students who may be going remote because they're in quarantine, and the families as well. This week also, on K-5, we had a changeover, and about 20 students came back into remote learning for the first time this year. These are students who were learning remotely for a variety of reasons, and their families and our, our school leaders and staff helped to get them back into school. Also, in the past few weeks, there was a change in term at the middle, at the middle at O'Malley, and there was actually, you know, quite a bit of in and out in terms of the, the, some folks moving out to remote and some kids moving in, in school to the hybrid model. And there's about a net gain, it was about 20, 25 folks moving, moving both ways, and about a net gain of six kids into the school. So, so they had to expand some of the classes to 13 students, but they kept six feet distance at the middle school, even though they have a few more students in person. And then we're expecting changes from the remote learning and the Play-Doh platform at the high school when the term changed in January as well. And some, some students and their families are already expressing a desire to come back into school as well. So just changes always, but just great work. And these are just two small examples of some of the, some of the good progress we're making. So I'll give an update on COVID in the schools, and then Karen will share data citywide. So at this point, since the beginning of the school year, we've had 52 cases, that's students and staff. 37 of those have been resolved, and 15 are currently active. That cases this week, I think, is up to 13 this week. Oh, no, that's, I think 10, 10 is about right. I'm not sure about that number. Otherwise, though, it's really a similar story to two weeks ago. More cases than two weeks ago, definitely. I'll show you those, those details in a moment, school by school. But the cases continue, for the most part, of very few close contacts. That's for two reasons. One, O'Malley cases have had very few close contacts because of the spacing there, the six feet plus. But then also, it continues to be that families are doing a great job keeping their students out if they are quarantining, or if there's been, or if they're, have any risk, or if, or especially if they're having any symptoms. And that also has continues to reduce our close contacts. So there have been a few cases this week that had close contacts, but, but most of them have not had close contacts. And still, we continue with no transmission within our schools. Again, what that means is that no positive cases, no close contacts within our schools, you know, close contacts of positive cases in our schools have become positive. That's something we really look at closely. And we also look at closely where positive cases are coming from. And working with the health department, typically, the health department knows, you know, almost always where that transmission came from. As Karen Carroll will talk about later, and I communicated to families and staff earlier this week, and we communicate in every notice we give about positive cases, is that most of the cases now are coming from within the family or known family or friends. And we continue to remind folks, even when you're at home, if you're with people that you don't live with, to make sure you are wearing face coverings, you're keeping six feet apart as much as possible, washing hands, and, and, and as much you can do, not eat with them. So, but we do see that, you know, the transmission is coming from outside the schools and it's not happening inside the schools. So just, we wanted to give, this past week, we gave sort of, I presented or I emailed to families and staff just to sort of school by school current cases. We want to do it at this point, because I know folks are concerned about increases across the schools, and wanted to give folks this, the specific data here, because whether it's, you know, family or friends, or whether it's social media, or even just with the news reports coming from around Massachusetts, it can see like things, seem like things are going haywire, but in the schools, they certainly aren't yet. We continue to be below any thresholds for the statewide test, the state mobile response testing, and that's, that's very good. And even though cases are definitely going up around the city. And that's, that's very good. And even though cases are definitely going up around the city, we're not seeing them as significantly in the, in the, in the, within the schools. We do know that there are many more absences because of students and also staff who are, who have to quarantine because of being close contacts outside of the school, inside the school too, but also more so outside the school. Some good news as well, where we've been looking at and trying to identify is testing that can be done in school on a regular basis. As I reported to families and now reporting to you earlier, we've been able to start this onsite PCR testing that's in the first row here. That's being done in school by our nurses. They were trained to do that. Earlier this week, they were doing the, what they call the posterior nasal swab, which is the deep sort of brain probe test. The, just, just, I think, today, they, we got materials and supplies to do the anterior nasal swab, which isn't nearly as deep. That's especially helpful for the younger children, who can be kind of squirmy. But these are for, these tests onsite PCR tests done by our nurses are for those students or staff who become symptomatic while at school. We can't, we can't test hundreds and hundreds of folks. It isn't, this program isn't set up that way, but we certainly can test folks who are symptomatic in school. We do not want folks to come back to school if they're symptomatic to get a test. We don't want them to come inside the school. So these are really focused on anyone, students or staff, who develop symptoms or report symptoms while, while at the building. This is provided by Action Ambulance in partnership with Melrose Wakefield Health. They're the ones who do all the legwork administration and all the reporting for us. It's no cost at the public schools or the individual. It's a, it's a great program. It allows folks to get testing very, very quickly. And then, and then let me just go to a couple of other ones. We're also looking at the Binax now Rapid Antigen Testing that's offered by Department of Education. They're in a Phase 1 with districts right now. We went a little slower on that, because we wanted to see, make sure it was proving, you know, there's efficacy, that there was good testing rates, and then also really have an understanding of how much administration and reporting has to be done by our nurses. There's quite a bit. Unlike the PCR testing we're doing, this one would be a significant burden on our nursing staff. So we want to make sure that we have, can, can do that well and figure out that well. So we're aiming this point to start that in January. That's a rapid antigen test that, although it has to be backed up by PCR test typically, you can begin contact tracing with a rapid antigen test, and that would allow us to do contact tracing more quickly. And that'd be, that'd be helpful as well. And that combination, if we can do it, of the rapid antigen testing and the PCR testing would be very powerful in our schools for those, those folks who are symptomatic. And as I mentioned before, the mobile testing from the state is also available to us, but that's more, you know, we hold, hold off on that. That's for a whole entire school or multiple schools. We'll hold off on that. If, if there's school transmission, or if we close and want to get back in, that sort of thing, but that's sort of mass testing provided by the state. So let me pause. Yeah, I think I see Melissa with a hand up.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben. My question is, for the student of a family that does not have transportation to go out of town to get a test, is there an ability for that student to get tested if they think they've been exposed by the school, even if they don't have symptoms? It seems we have families in Gloucester that just do not have the capability of going out of town to find a testing site. So I just want to try to understand what resources are available to families like that.
Yeah, both and. So I'll let Karen talk more about the resource. I'm aware of some, but I don't want to misspeak on the ones for folks outside of school. We can also make this testing available for, if we do know some of our families who've had children who are symptomatic, have had trouble getting testing. So if that's the case, and this is sort of, we, we learn about this one, you know, typically, one by one, through our either counselors or nurses or also teachers, if the family's having particular difficulty. So if a student is symptomatic and has, has, is having particular difficulty, we can provide the PCR testing in school for them. Our nurses have developed protocol to do that safely. And so for, for, you know, for those families who really are in need and have symptoms, we can do the PCR testing in our schools. But I know there are also other, other sites available in the, in the city. Karen, if you don't mind chiming in right now, what are other options for families that have trouble, trouble getting access to testing locally?
Sure. For either contacts, if someone's a known contact or has symptoms, they can, we will make sure they get to testing. So we have one option with the hospital on Wednesday mornings that we can utilize. So it's essentially the Danvers drive-through operation comes up to AGH every Wednesday, and it's not open to the public, but for situations like this, where the public health nurses might need to refer someone who has difficulty either getting a ride or the transportation, they can, they can go and use this site. We also have an ambulance service that we work with, Bowport Ambulance. So anyone that needs testing and can't drive, or for whatever reasons, we can either have the ambulance take them to the test site, or we can now have the ambulance go to them. So there's a number of options for people. If it's someone that just wants to get tested because they traveled or something, that's a little different, and we would have to direct them to a stop the spread site, and we would not be able to pay for that transportation. But if they really wanted to get tested, we, we would help facilitate that somehow. Does that answer the question?
I think so. Yeah, I think so. Melissa just froze in there for a moment. That is actually where we segue to Karen. So unless there are other, other questions, for me, we can move on to Karen Carroll. And Karen, just tell me when you want, I have your, the, the two different, you know, the data points you want to show, just tell me when.
Okay. Yeah, I think we could probably just jump right into the data. What I thought it would do is walk through our weekly and daily dashboard data comparing the state and the city. And that, I think, kind of gives a clearer picture of the whole story. So again, you've seen this before. I use this with the Board of Health as well, and we use it to track weekly how things are going. So the first indicator is the positive test rate, which as of today is at 5.9% in the state. That is continuing to slowly increase and has for a number of weeks now. Gloucester last week was 6.2%. And I, maybe will come down this week. It's hard to know. We don't have the total number of tests that we've done, so we can't calculate that on our own. Comes out on Thursdays, but we're sitting right about the state average as well. And that's, that positive, that positive test rate has significantly increased in the last month or two. And it's, it's, you know, it's a concerning indicator that we do watch. The number of deaths in the state, that's actually trending down at the moment or holding roughly steady. And in Gloucester, we've had no new deaths since the spring. Patients in hospitals. So in general, and this is the thing you hear about mostly on the news, and this is really the biggest driver of major policy decisions from the governor's office, as well as local boards of health, is the hospital, what's happening in our hospitals. So we'll come to that a little bit more. But at the moment, the numbers of hospitalized patients is continuing to trend up in the state quite significantly. Locally, our picture is a little bit different. We, in here in Gloucester, still only have two people in the hospital at the moment. Yeah, I think there's two, maybe three. But that hasn't really changed much in the last couple of months. In terms of our healthcare system readiness, so again, that's, I gave, I made the state red because it's, it's trending in a negative direction. The, the state at the moment is experiencing a lot of pressure on its hospitals, especially ICU beds. And if we look regionally at our region, our HMCC Region 3, which is what we are a part of, that hospital region, currently 88% of the ICU beds are full. Now, the Massachusetts ICU beds is, is a little bit lower than that. The average is 70%. So this region is really concerning. We have sat for a few weeks now above the state average in terms of the capacity, or, you know, how full our ICU beds are. It's actually come down since last week, when it was in the high 90s. So, so we feel a little better. But again, the Gloucester picture is, is unique again in that we, they still are reporting sufficient capacity. They have seen their hospitalizations increase, but they have a surge plan. They have enough staffing and a plan for surging their staff if needed. And at the moment, they have capacity in their ICU in, in both hospitals, but they are mainly keeping Beverly as the main COVID hospital and trying to keep AGH a clean site. So the healthcare system readiness, you know, locally, they are ready. They are starting or preparing for vaccination of their employees, and they have surge plans in place. Testing capacity, again, I, I put this as a negative trend in that the turnaround time is a little longer than we'd like to see it. And there's just never enough testing. So currently, the Massachusetts average is a two-day turnaround time. And more locally, we're seeing a four to six-day turnaround time, depending on which lab people go to. So if they use the, if the test provider is using Broad Institute, it's very quick. It's less than two days. But most of our area providers will refer to the Quest Labs, who are now helping out nationally, and that slows things down. Contact tracing capacity, again, the state is trying to ramp up their full team, and they're continuing to hire, but they're, you know, they're not quite, quite there yet in meeting the full demand of the state. Locally, we are in very good shape in that we are continuing to be able to contact all of our index cases and their contacts. We have a seven-day-a-week team with a business liaison. And the business liaison nurse reaches out to any business or agency that has questions, concerns, clusters, rumors of clusters, whatever is going on, will work with them on the requirements for their business and any potential strategies that could mitigate problems as well. The Massachusetts average, you may have seen a kind of disconcerting article in the front page of the paper, saying that contact tracing was unsuccessful. And we've since submitted an article to correct that. Contact tracing is always successful, even if you don't, you know, complete all of it. Anyone we contact to isolate and educate is one more person that we're removing from the general community who potentially could be infectious. So to say it's unsuccessful was misleading. And, you know, furthermore, I think Gloucester is, is far ahead of that average, state average of contacting about 97% of all of our close contacts. So again, this is referring to people who are identified as close contacts of an index case. The state is getting to 72% of them, and we're reaching more like 97% on average. Incidence average, again, this is from last week's report, which will be out again tomorrow. The state's incidence was 50 per 100,000. Gloucester's was 39 as of last week. Our wastewater virus levels have been increasing steadily for several weeks until last week, 12/11, when they actually came down. And so did the, the pace of our new cases also slowed up. So that wastewater graph, which I guess we can pull that up now if you have it, Ben. We, we map our wastewater, and I'll just look at the first graph there, the total case count. This is total cases in Gloucester is that top line. And then the lighter, the aqua line below is the wastewater virus concentration. So you can see that they've roughly gone together in parallel. And what we see this past week is a dipping down of the virus level as the cases are still climbing. So for us, this is somewhat reassuring, that it does not mean we're looking at a massive explosion of cases even further from where we're currently at. But again, we, we don't know, and we'll follow and see if next week's picture, you know, kind of reaffirms that. So that's, you know, roughly where we are with our, our virus. You can see back in mid-October, where there was a spike. That was a particular outbreak that was contained quickly, and, and that virus level came back to around the detection point for a while. So I think that's kind of an interesting graph. We, we watch that also every week with the board, just to see what the trends are. And if, if there is something happening with the wastewater virus level that's indicating maybe there's going to be a huge spike. So you can see, two weeks ago, we were worried with that big spike, and glad to see it come down a bit last week. Okay, so we can go back to that other chart. And then again, any school testing, that's the other criteria that we like to look at, is what's going on in our schools. We have not reached any of those DESI thresholds in the last 14 days or ever. So that is great, and a very positive trend, we hope, continues. As of today, or as of yesterday, actually, we had 123 active cases, and I, I think there's actually 128 as of now. There are two in the hospital, no in-school transmission, no new deaths since the spring. And an interesting statistic from the, the State Department of Public Health, they're starting to break out where the clusters are appearing and where the cases. And again, 83% of all of the state's cases are linked to household transmission. So again, we just can't say it enough that what happens, that's where transmission is happening. It's not where the virus is originating, but everywhere else is following the rules enough that the virus isn't able to spread. And I think that's the easiest way to think of it. We talk about businesses, hospitals, even our long-term care facilities, places where in the spring, we saw a lot of transmission. We're not seeing the transmission, because they're following the rules, and they're not giving the, the virus an opportunity to move from person to person. And that includes our schools. So that's the great news. The bad news is, in our homes, the, the virus is able to move around. And that, that number of clusters refers to just when someone in the house gets the virus and gets sick, the immediate family that live with them are very, very likely to, to get the virus. It's a high-risk situation. But it also includes clusters that are related to small gatherings in private homes. And if you've heard Governor Baker speak, this is a large number of clusters have been related to Thanksgiving, other family or social events in people's homes, where they let down their guard, and they have an assumption, because I know these people, and they're close to me, they won't be carrying the virus, or it's not as risky. We understand that. It's human nature. But I think the data is really powerful, that 83% of our cases are happening in people's homes. So, you know, it's just something to really think about as we move into these holidays, and to really understand that piece of the pie. It also, you know, it's also a very difficult policy. There's not a lot you can do on a policy level to, you can't move back. There's no phase that shuts down, you know, people's homes. So it's, it's difficult to find any strategies to, to manage or reduce that amount of transmission that's occurring in people's private homes. Our nursing homes have been and continue to be in full compliance with the state requirements, and we are finding very few cases periodically there, mainly with staff, and mainly asymptomatic people identified through routine screening, that all of the nursing homes, long-term care facilities are required to participate in. So that's weekly, sometimes even more frequently screening and testing of all staff and patients. So that's very good news, too. So, you know, I hope this chart with a little bit of explanation gives you a sense of where we are in the city, and where, where we hope things will improve, where our trouble spots are. And if there's questions, I'm happy to answer them, or if there's some part of the story that you don't, I haven't told enough where you're interested in, and wasn't on that sheet.
Joel.
Thank you. The chart about the wastewater testing, the last written date on it was November 27th, and the chart continued along the Y-axis a little bit further. How frequently are How frequently are samples being tested, and what is the most recent data point in that chart, date-wise?
We test once a week, Joel, great question. On a Tuesday, the draw happens, and then we usually get the report at the end of that week on Friday or Saturday. And so I think we had one on December fourth and maybe again on the eleventh. And the eleventh, May, I think the eleventh is is last week, right? Yes. Or, yeah, it's the eleventh, and that was, that should be the last data point on there where it started to come down. And we were relieved to see that. So the holidays have interrupted their routine. We're we're, let me put it on, yes, I don't think they label every week. So the last the last time our report came out was December eleventh, it's last Friday. And so we're hoping that we'll get the next report on Friday or Saturday. But with the holidays, it has been a little bit, their schedule has changed around a bit. But we should get one this week. They're pretty prompt.
Two-week intervals between the vertical lines. So it's November twenty-seven plus two weeks, which I believe is last week.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Ben, you want to move on?
Second, thank you, Karen, very much. As I've spoken about, and I know you have as well, really, I deeply believe that the schools need be need to be the last places, that some of the last places to close rather than the first, like we were in the springtime, but we know much more about it now. And and that's what I'll keep on advocating. The reason I'll do that is for a number, a number of reasons. One, we know, as you said, that it's much easier for us to really keep track of how students are are operating. You know, that they're being safe, that they're being distant, doing masks and hand hygiene. That's one, just sort of practical matter. And then the other, another piece is that more and more evidence is coming out around the state and around the nation about just the real mental health challenges. Many more, very significant increases in children admitted to hospitals and also emergency visits related to mental health, anxiety, depression. And we know that when they're connected in in school, both with their with their peers and their friends, but also their, you know, caring adults, that really helps them tremendously on so many levels. And then and then I haven't even mentioned, of course, the learning aspect and and continuing to develop academically. So those are important reasons. And and we do know that, I hope, I just want everybody to know that that with Karen's help and support and Department of Health, Department of Health support and work in our our school nurses, we are paying very closely attention, close attendance every single day, both, you know, where things are going, cases that are resolving, cases that are coming up, close contacts. Really want people to know that we we are keeping a very close eye on this. And although we we value and prioritize our kids being in school, we will only do it, continue to do it while it's, you know, from a safety standpoint, you know, but looking at that broadly, not just specific numbers of COVID cases, but are concerned and will keep on looking about school-wide transmission especially. So, thank you, Karen.
Yeah, and I I just want to reiterate that point, Ben, that, again, like you said, more and more studies are coming out around the risk to, the health risk to youth of not being in school and being home alone. And more and more studies statewide, and the Department of Public Health reports it to us weekly, the very few cases of transmission within the schools. Now, one area that is a little bit of, you know, a little bit different here, a little bit of an exception, is with indoor sports. And we are starting to see that. We haven't had indoor sports yet, so except for hockey. And that has been a challenge statewide. There's been a lot of cases linked to ice hockey indoor. So, you know, I think we have to watch carefully as we move forward into the winter, hope that we can find safe ways to play sports inside. But it will not be as easy as and as safe as outdoor sports where little transmission occurs outdoors. So it'll be a challenge, and I think it's something we do need to watch really closely. Several of my colleagues in other nearby communities are really struggling with this because now the Department of Public Health requires for ice hockey, if there is an exposure, the entire team needs to quarantine. So that's everyone that was on the ice, coach, referee, both teams. So it could be a case against another team in Lynn or PBD that we played, and our entire team will need to quarantine for the minimum of eight days. So that's a, that's a significant number of kids that would be removed automatically from school. So that, you know, that's quarantined from hockey as well as school and everything. They really need to isolate. So depending on the data, the Department of Public Health will be fine-tuning its recommendations around other indoor sports. And we don't know where they'll come down on that right now. But the hockey transmission is high. They think it's something to do with the temperature, the air, air quality or air, the way the 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 virus sort of stays close to the ice and in that bowl. We don't really know why, but, you know, that, so we're following the data all the time. And and the final thing I wanted to say that I forgot is that we continue to get compliments about your staff. I get them, the mayor gets them, Ben gets them. We hear them from parents around the exceptional job that are the schools, the school nurses under Jeff Parco are doing. And they are following protocols to the T. Our nurses continue to say that, that whenever they have dealings with the school team, they find the protocols are being followed, and that's resulting in very, very few contacts in the school that have to be asked to quarantine. So we appreciate that partnership, and it's, makes it a lot easier for us to do our work, too.
Samantha, you have a question?
Thank you, Karen. As always, super helpful to have you here. You answered my my original question, but since you went into this, to sports, can I ask a couple of questions about that? Just a clarifying question. When you had mentioned that the entire team has to quarantine, is that sort of, that's recommended by the state? Yes. And is that for all indoor sports or just hockey?
At this point, it's just for ice hockey because the rates of transmission are are so high. And ice hockey has been going for a while. There are leagues that have been playing now for a couple of months. So there is enough data collected statewide to really know that there's something about this particular sport that has resulted in a lot of transmission. And so that is the state's recommendation, just literally as of this past week or so. They've changed the guidelines for us that it's it's no longer recommended that we try to, you know, speak and isolate the couple of people that might have had that close contact for fifteen minutes as we do with other sports. It's the whole team, anyone on the ice at the time. The other team has to quarantine for the full time.
And that's a lot of loss in in-person learning.
Absolutely, and it's a lot of time for the tracing team as well. It's a lot of, lot of contacts and stuff. So we'll see, I mean, hopefully, other sports will not require that much. You know, their data won't look the same, but we just don't know. And I think it's something we have to watch carefully because it is, it is going to be a riskier type of situation. Indoor sports just is, it's like indoor socializing. It's going to, there's going to be more transmission with that.
And so when you said that they're continuing to come out with guidelines, it sounds like our winter sports season officially won't start until after the New Year. Do we think we'll have sort of a really set in stone set of guidelines for the indoor sports before then, before they start their first games?
No, I I don't. I think it will never be really set in stone. It will continue to evolve as the data does, and that's both good and bad. I mean, DPH is really responding to the real-time data as it comes in from school districts. But, and it it may be that we learn more about this hockey thing and are able to figure it out better, so we don't have to quarantine everyone. So, you know, we may see that get refined as well to not so drastic. And don't know yet about wrestling, gymnastics, all the other basketball indoor sports. We have to watch. But it's really important that, you know, parents are kind of paying attention as well, doing everything you can. And, you know, we'll just work with the youth sports folks to try to make sure that we all follow those protocols best we can and keep the kids playing and do the stuff that they love to do, and we know it was good for them. But we have to make sure it doesn't spread, allow for a lot more transmission of the virus and interrupts school learning as well, in-person learning. It's a balance.
Melissa has a question.
Thank you, thank you, Karen. It was a pleasure to have you here, bring a, bring a comment to this whole situation. Did the, did the regulations change that we don't quarantine from fourteen days and they've gone to ten days with a test, negative testing? Do we follow that regulation?
Yes, so DESI will change their guidelines. They haven't yet on their website, but they are telling us they are going to follow the state's guidelines. The quarantine period of fourteen days has has not changed. You you still can get the virus in, all the way up through the fourteen days. So the actual time period hasn't changed. But what has changed is that if you are symptom-free and you are able and willing to monitor yourself through the full fourteen days, and you have a negative test, you may leave quarantine after day eight, on day eight. So you can get your test in day five, you can leave on day, day eight and return to school or work or the grocery store, or whatever you need to do. So those are the provisions in which you can. But for the remainder, all the way up to fourteen days, you need to be self-monitoring and taking your temperature, watching for symptoms. It's still possible up to fourteen days. But they show after eight or nine days, there's very, very little virus still left in most people to actually transmit it to someone else. So again, DPH is following that science. And also that if they shorten the quarantine period, they'll have better compliance. They'll be able to return people to work at very low risk to others. And so that's why that got changed.
Joel, you have a question?
Yeah, so, apologies if this was discussed at another meeting. I know I missed some of the last meeting when sports were discussed. My question, I guess, is, you know, for Ben, how do you reconcile what we're hearing from the, you know, Director of Public Health over here with your mission as stated in your report to, you know, keep us in schools? If, you know, hockey alone is an automatic, you know, again, like, like Karen just said, someone from PBD tests positive, and our entire team and our coaches are, you know, boom, off the ice and isolated in their own bedrooms for ten days, right? You know, the accelerated quarantine. How does that, how does that, you know, reconcile with, oh, sorry, right? How does that reconcile with, you know, this intention to keep us in school? If a single, if a single sneeze can wipe out, you know, a team for two weeks almost?
Okay, it's not a single sneeze, first of all, but but your, your question's a very important one. So Karen and I were talking today, actually, and this is, as she said, some new information. And what we said when we, two weeks ago, was we have to keep monitoring this and see how things develop. And I think that's where we are right now. And I haven't had a chance to talk to to Brian Lefata about it, but it's definitely concerning, you know, and 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 it's something that we have to, we may have to change on, very honestly. For, because, as as I agree with you, you know, if there is a, if it seems to us, or we see, you know, where it is, even if it says, you know, it's one time it happens and everyone's quarantined, then it becomes not worth it, really, honestly. It's a balance, you know, and so I don't think we're there yet, but I think it's something that that Brian Lefata and myself, James Cook, and I think Karen need to talk over and maybe come back to the committee and, or come back and 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 modify. I will say this, and I, which is something I said, you know, two weeks ago, I have a lot of confidence on our coaches and our athletic program that we can do things very, very well. It's hard to, it's hard to know about other schools, although I think I I trust schools quite a bit. I would really urge, one of the challenges we're seeing in the state are the private hockey programs and the clubs. And I really would urge parents who are listening to this or can hear any of this, you know, to to really push, if you're involved in these leagues, push these leagues to develop protocols and develop response times that are similar to what we have, what we have in place, we'll have in place. You know, it's, it's, there may be other scientific parts that I don't understand, but it certainly does seem in some ways that that these private leagues can do a better job. And I think it's up to them to do a better job, but also up to our parents to ask them to do a better job for the safety of their children. Now, that's one message I'd give to folks, and it does warn us to keep on looking at this and maybe adjust before we start playing games outside of, you know, before we start playing games.
Kathy?
So, Ben, you said you haven't talked to Brian Lefata about this, but maybe that's a message we could ask him to communicate to, you know, to our local youth hockey organization. You know, just as, you know, we're all doing our best, and this is what we're hearing, and we just want to make sure we're all doing everything so that they understand what, you know, what's in front of the high school hockey teams. I do have a question for Karen. When you say the Department of Public Health, are you talking at the state level or at the national level? So I'm just curious if if there's consistency in terms of, you know, what what the guidance is on on this particular topic.
Yeah, great question. I'm talking about the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the governor's task force on the COVID pandemic and reopening is the guidelines we follow. We we stay, you know, with them lockstep. We can go beyond them locally if we felt we need to. And, you know, the Board of Health will have discussions, the mayor's office, the schools. But typically, you know, we're kind of staying with the recommendations from the Department of Public Health. And they're usually based on the CDC recommendations, you know, nationally, but not always this time. And and sometimes things have changed with, with CDC's guidance that was, you know, or changed and went back. And so we follow DPH because they're reviewing what CDC is coming up with, and and then they'll decide whether we move to that in Massachusetts or not.
Thank you.
Samantha, and then Joel.
Ben, I know I sent this in an email to both you and Brian, but I just want to reiterate it now that we've heard straight from Karen that there could be possibly a loss of eight days for an entire team, that parents are made aware of that risk before they agree to have their students participate. I just think that there are some parents that might choose to prioritize in-person learning and not risk that loss before they sign their their kids up.
Yeah, that, I think, I think that is a good suggestion now, then. I think, I think it makes sense to follow up on that, definitely. Thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Cool. Thanks, I had something else, but just to piggyback on that. You know, it sounds like that warning should also come, you know, that if this hasn't already gone out, that at any moment, the season could be over if, you know, DESI comes out and says, and my question for you was going to be instead, you know, if DESI comes out and says, you know, we're now receiving more data. It turns out, you know, basketball's almost as bad as hockey. It's not quite as bad because the temperature is different or something like that, but it's almost as bad as hockey. How many different sports do we have to have on this list of both teams quarantined automatically before we just, you know, pull the plug? You know, at that point, you'd have the hockey teams out and then basketball teams out. That's like five percent of the student population, like, you know, because they both played games with puberty that week. Sorry, puberty, no offense to you, I'm just using it as the the dummy, but.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there are only four sports, first of all, for athletic, for winner, for winner. And and the other two are swimming, which doesn't have any meets, you know, face-to-face with other folks. And then, why am I blanking on the other one? I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the fourth one.
Wrestling.
No wrestling.
Gymnastics.
Gymnastics. Yeah.
No gymnastics, is it, there gymnastics in the winter now?
Yes, gymnastics is is right.
Thank you, thank you, James. So, and and, you know, the the larger of those two are are basketball and hockey. So anyway, it's, you know, again, we do not, we will, we will see how this, how this happens, and and work closely with Karen and Brian. And and if we have to make adjustments either, you know, before the New Year or just after the New Year, we can certainly do that. And we'll make sure that families know about, you know, that if, if it's, for hockey especially, if it's, you know, one person with a case, then they're all out. And and make sure they understand what they're out for. And it's not, as Karen, it's not only hockey, but also. And, and make sure they understand what they're out for. And it's not, as Karen, it's not only hockey, but also school. And I think it makes sense to make that clear to folks.
But also the, the season itself. I mean, hockey is an expensive proposition, you know, having, having gone through a kid who played hockey one season. Fortunately, she was able to pick up a lot of stuff from the rink, but it's still, it's a financial investment to playing hockey. And if there are some, you know, people doing it for the first time, then you have no choice but to, you know, cut the program because, you know, they're on their second quarantine or something. That's a lot of money for some families for a season that never happened, you know? Same way Sam once warned about the loss of school, that also be worried about the loss of the, you know, the investment.
Got it. Yep.
A lot of leagues in the fall and even some in the spring offered a, a credit or something towards the next season. And some schools, I think you guys did too, a credit towards the next season if the season got canceled. But you're right. I think part, you know, from the fall as well, we've had to go into it with that attitude of at any point, things can change. And in terms of how many sports on the list of everybody quarantining, I think it's probably a better question to see how often does it actually happen? It potentially could happen. And, you know, if we could, I don't know, you know, have one whole grade or one classroom or a whole bunch of kids that play on a certain team together. But, you know, sometimes it's not. We haven't had that happen yet here. And they're regional teams, some of them. So it's, you know, it's, again, it's, it's still a, a large number of kids being out of school, but I think we need to see what happens with that if we actually, you know, have to do that. Or if people who, again, if, if people don't go to, if they're, if they're not exposed in the first place, you know, that's kind of taking it back another step. If we can make sure people don't go to practice if they're symptomatic or they've had a high-risk exposure. So, you know, those are all the education, the prevention pieces that you can keep trying to work back, but it's hard. So definitely need to watch it. And again, it falls into that bucket of things kids love to do and makes them feel normal and good about themselves and all those good things. But it's just a little bit more complicated in the winter than it was in the fall.
Thank you, Karen. It's always, I almost said pleasure, but it's always very.
The bear of bad news.
Formative and, and very necessary that you come and, and share your time with us and, and we all appreciate it and thank you very much. And just before we move on to the next item, Joel, you had your hand up during consent agenda and then you froze. Is there something you wanted to say about that was on the consent agenda?
Oh, I just wanted to ask if anyone knew whether the donation of that, first off, the donation of the car that was incredibly generous. The 2008 Outback with only 200,000 miles is worth way more than that $14 valuation admins gave it. So thank you very much to the donors. But is that the same sort of write-off you'd get if you were to donate to Cars for Kids or one of those other charities that picks up a car? I'd be interested to know because if it is and the auto shop finds these, you know, useful, there are people who are inclined every year to donate their cars to various, you know, good causes and it'd be nice to educate the community that the Gloucester Auto Shop is, you know, a viable option for those donations.
As far as I, as far as I know, the school department can give people a, a tax deduction for donation.
Finds as useful, I think it'd be a great thing to kind of promote among the community. Say, if you're looking to donate a car, consider the auto shop as one of the, the outlets.
As long as we don't turn into a junkyard. All right, Ben, we're going to move on to English language learners.
Yep. I do have to show, share one thing with you first before we get there because there's been a, I just want to give you an update on this. There may or may not be more to come from this. Yesterday, the Board of Education changed statewide student learning time regulations. These should not affect us because I, I believe you were over them or, or, you know, within earshot of them. But just want to make sure you're aware of this shift. Again, it was a vote, a vote by the State Board of Ed yesterday. And it affects, you know, sort of the live instruction. And by that, they mean either in-person instruction by teachers or synchronous, you know, instruction, remote synchronous instruction. And they've given now some targets or, or, you know, limits, I mean, minimums rather, minimums on, on terms of what has to happen over a 10-day school period. And all I'll say on this is we have a, you know, a check on number two here. Check on number three, if, you know, for remote learning right now, or remote learning academies, that's an absolute yes on that. And would be if we go fully remote. And then a yes on, on number three as well. Number one, which I have to look at very closely, I, I'm, you know, I'm almost positive, we're, we're well, well above that, but want to look at it closely and need to just look at a few schedules, that sort of stuff with, with the principals. But just want you to know that this is out there now. You may hear a lot about it. It's causing, like I said, quite a bit of concentration in other districts. But I think we're one of the districts that, that is, you know, how this has as well in hand. But if, if we need to adjust something, we'll come back and let you know in, in, in the beginning of January. So that's just, that's it on that. So as we go to the presentation of remote learning, first of all, thanks. We have a bunch of staff here who are going to help us with this and want to, and want to just appreciate them and stick around here for what might be a late night. So this is going to be, I think, well, I think one of the first or maybe one of the first in a long time presentations on English language education and, and our English learners. And we're going to, we're going to approach it from a variety of angles. But basically, the primary point is, from my point of view, is that our English lan, English language learners, our students and their families bring tremendous assets to our schools and our system. And they do it by typically from traveling from, from far, far away. And doing some things that I think are much more complicated and much more challenging than anything I've experienced in my life, which is, you know, moving across the sea or across a country or across continents, coming to a new place, not being able to speak the language as well as, as they want to, or they will. And really having to build a life that may be with relatives and maybe without relatives, that may be with, with family they know or fam, or folks they don't know. And it's a real credit to them, their families, and it's a real asset to our community. And so we're going to learn, learn a little bit about how we do English language education in our, in our school system right now. We're going to learn how it's been growing. And we're also going to hear from not only some, you know, data about that work, but also in our staffing and how we approach it. But also here's some stories from our, our, our educators and our staff who work most closely with our English learners and their families. We're going to start by having Sabrina Giordano from the high school. Help us learn a little bit about these families and their student, their children and where they come from and, and who they are. So Sabrina, can you take it away, please?
Hi, thank you. So, good evening. My name is Sabrina Giordano and I'm one of the ESL teachers at Gloucester High School. This is my sixth year in Gloucester Public School System. I am pleased to be here tonight to speak about our English learners and their families. In 2016, I was brought in to help with an SEI math class that had recently seen an influx in students, in English learner students. They needed help communicating with these students. And since I speak through of the languages these students speak, the Assistant Superintendent at the time brought me in. Thirty-four ELs packed that small room and these students were from countries such as Syria, Afghanistan, Philippines, Italy, Guatemala, El Salvador, Mexico, the Dominican Republic, and Brazil, just to name a few. Since then, the EL population has significantly continued to grow. During the past several years, I have gotten to know my students and their families very well. I have been fortunate enough to meet them during registration and have gone from reassuring them that their children will be okay in their new environment to following them through to graduation. The parents and guardians I have met care about educating their children and are so appreciative of the variety of opportunities they see for their children's futures. These students and families bring a wealth of culture and diversity that is welcomed and needed in our schools. As a school, it is our job to help make their transition as smooth as possible. Many of our English learners come from countries that have similar educational system as ours. The biggest challenge they may face is acquiring a new language. Some students have had the opportunity to have previously taken English as a foreign language. And in some cases, English is a third language for them. For others, such as our students from Syria, Afghanistan, and Russia, the challenge is a lot more difficult as they have to learn an entirely new alphabet. Fortunately, we have excellent teachers in our district who have been trained to tackle these challenges head-on. There are other challenges that some of these students face in addition to a new language. These are more social, emotional challenges that they need help with. Some families are coming to the US to escape a life surrounded by poverty, crime, and violence. These are, these are students who have seen tragedies that no child should ever see. Students who have escaped terrorism and civil unrest, students who have left their families and friends behind in order to have a better life. Many of our students are SLIF students, which are students with limited or interrupted formal education. These challenges do not stop these students and families from achieving what they came here for, which is a better future. My kids, as I refer to them as, come to school day after day with a smile on their face and eagerness to learn that is commendable. Thank you for listening. I will be speaking later to discuss in further detail our ELs at Gloucester High School and what we are doing there for them.
Thank you, Sabrina, for kicking us off. I will now start the presentation. And, and a variety of us will help out with it. But thanks, Sabrina, for giving that overview and introducing us to the wide variety of English learners that are, that are in our community and in our schools. So just, we're going to start with some numbers here. And there's been quite a bit of growth in Gloucester Public Schools and in Gloucester of English learners over the past five years. So you can see that in FY16, we, the total number was 116 and now we're at 199, I'm sorry, this year 219. And we anticipate, anticipate next year being in, in the 230 range. So essentially doubling tho, those numbers in about five or six years. And so it's becoming quite significant, actually. And you can see also on the bottom, at the same time, our EL teachers haven't really kept pace with that, but we've been growing them definitely. So we have 8.6 FTEs of English language educators at this point, when we started with five in FY16. In terms of just the total number of students, this is just really showing you growth, same numbers from the previous slide, but you can see the year-to-year growth. So, you know, averaging, I'd say probably in the neighborhood of about 15% a year with really 10% being the typical year. And we anticipate some, probably similar growth next year as well. Of course, if you say a 10% of growth, that means a, a larger number of kids every year, of new English learners every year. And you can see here, we divided it into three, you know, spans of three grades. So K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and then 9, 10, 11. And you can see in terms of, so, and we did that so you can sort of compare apples to apples, the same number of grades, the same number of grades. And you can certainly see that, well, in our upper grades, 9, 10, and 11, there are 45 students. Our younger grades are 77. So we expect this to, that, you know, total number of students to keep growing in the years to come as evidenced by this. Now, I will say that our EL students do come in at, you know, at all different ages. But you'll see in a little bit just how, how they, they often differ in terms of their, their levels and where they are in terms of their, their knowledge and proficiency in English. And then now we're looking at the number of students in each school. So you can see how, you know, that's for this year. So the top is in-person students or English language students, English learners in, in each school. If you want students to beam in, 14 East Gloucester, et cetera, et cetera. The most being at Gloucester High School, 56 students, but of course, it's also the largest school by a fair bit. And then also we have English learners in our remote, our, our remote schools as well. So a total of 22 students across K through 12. I'm going to hand it off to Chris, Christine Castle. Now Christine is Director and Coordinator of many things, Title One, some, a lot of parent engagement work. She helps with her student registration and also is sort of the linchpin of our English language education work, especially our work with our families across the district. So, um, Chris, if you can take it over and help folks understand some of the background about everything from, from placement to instruction for our English learners.
Hi, thank you so much for having us all tonight. Wanted to give a large shout out to all the EL staff that's here tonight. There are some on call, there are some on Zoom. So thank you so much for being here to support our learners. It's really important. And again, I, I know all of you have also said, I, I just want to reiterate, thank you so much for all that you do. All of our educators, they're doing a phenomenal job across the board and it's, it's fantastic to see. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the process of registration and how our students are identified as an L learner. So, you know, as, as the slides have shown, we have seen a rise in some cultural diversity here in Gloucester Public Schools, which is fantastic for, for any district to get, you know, students from a different, from a multitude of different countries. It really just adds to the culture and the flavor of the, the city or the community that they're in. So the way that our students are identified at the time of registration, each family completes a home language survey and that survey really kicks off what happens as far as looking at the languages that the family members speak, whether it's a grandparent, great-grandparent, parents themselves, or a student. So once that language survey, and we do it at the time of registration, once that red, home language survey has been completed, whether or not, we then indicate whether or not a student needs to be screened for EL services. Once that does happen and a student has been identified as a student who does need some EL support, we do notify parents in writing and they have the opportunity to actually opt-out services, which most of our families do not, or they do consider taking our, you know, taking into consideration working with our EL teachers to help support language proficiency and the, you know, the need to acquire some additional language skills. Our student records are updated and students become EL learners in our, in our databases and in our systems. There are four domains that are assessed during, for language development. One of the main assessments that all K to 12 EL students take is called access and that's happens every January. And it is happening again this year, even though there is a pandemic, it's still happening. Students are assessed in the four domains, listening, reading, speaking, and writing. And, you know, it's really, it's a difficult student, it's a difficult test for our students because, you know, as the superintendent mentioned, a lot of our students do struggle when they're coming in with not only speaking, but it's also listening, it's reading, it's fluency, it's the sounds of each of the letters, it's the blending of letters, a lot of things that we take for granted as we, you know, teach our own children how to read or our teachers teach our children to read. It's, it's a lot. It's a lot for our students to take in. And a lot of our students are coming in and, you know, some of them have had some struggles in other communities where they've lived or in other countries where they have lived and they're coming here. And it's a fantastic opportunity for them to really be immersed in our cultures and also to be immersed in our educational opportunities. Efficiency of level of our EL learners. So there are five different levels where our students are placed. So a level one student would be a student that would be a student who is either a newcomer, who is new to the United States, new to English language. And then they build, our, our levels build from there. So from a level one, students are really learning the basics. And then moving to level two, they learn more about English language and building sentences and some, some reading and some fluency. Same with level three, it's really that building, it's that scaffolding of skills throughout the levels. A lot of our students, you know, they, especially in our younger grades, as all of you, I'm sure, have read the research or heard the research, research. The younger that we do see our learners, the quicker they pick up everything. They are like sponges. They are immersed in the English language and they are just quick to learn. Some of our students that do come to us that are a little bit older, it takes them a little bit more time to catch on, but, you know, once they really get moving, it's, But you know, once they really get moving, it's um, you know, they do a fantastic job and they're just so immersed in the language. And um you know, it's it's wonderful to see our EL teachers do a fantastic job. I think Superintendent Lamas, are you gonna handle this one or?
Yep, I'll, I'll get back to the data. You do the fun stuff out of the data. So uh what we're showing you here are the the number of students at each level. Um and what I appreciate about just going back to the levels here for a second is, you know, even some, a layperson like me, you can really understand the differences, you know, just by reading these through in terms of how, and you can see the progression through the various levels in terms of level of complexity. So looking at the numbers, a level one here, you'll see. What I find interesting about this uh chart is you see that, I think it's fifty-six or so English learners at the high school, thirty-one of them are at level one. So there, we often will get students who come in at this level, um you know, the high school level. Um and so uh and 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 you'll see that that actually differs where in some of the younger, younger ages, you have more students at level one in the, in the, in the lower, more students at higher levels in the lower grades. So you also will notice again and again, uh the pink and the teal bars with vets and Beeman having, having much higher um numbers of English learners in 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 their schools. So again, here, this is level two. You can see it's even, pretty even across four schools. Again, we see um, we see uh vets, GHS and Beam, but also you see O'Malley with, um I think really a majority of their students at level two. Again, uh now you're seeing uh things, you know, level out with GHS having fewer um uh students at the higher levels, whereas uh Beeman and Vets have have a larger number as well. And um across the district, um you see that, you know, there are higher numbers in many, in more schools here. Um or similar numbers, I think. It's actually similar numbers in more schools at level three. Um and again, here are folks um at these levels, level four. Um I think that's where we stopped there, but um just as, just to share with you, um you know, from level one where I think we have um, you know, close to ninety students. Level two, about uh about seventy, seventy students. Uh level three, uh approximately forty-five students. And then level four, at uh at uh just over twenty students. Um showing that, you know, especially in the, in the, in the lower, in the lower levels, they're really wanna be able to uh focus their energies, focus our our staff, attention on getting those kids who are at level one, level two, moving quickly to the higher levels and understanding uh the language and therefore um greater access to to the academics that we offer as quickly as possible. And uh Christine, Chris, I'll hand it back over to you.
Thank you. Um so as I mentioned, we do do, uh we do have annual assessments for our L learners. And um in January, again, it's our access test and that test really does determine um the level of student proficiency. Um the levels of proficiency that where our students are um engaging and how our students are really doing in all of the four domains. Our, our L learners also take MCAS, um grades three, three, and also grade ten. So they are not, um they also are assessed, um you know, using both of those um assessments. And also uh this year, our um L learners will again take um the assessments that are used throughout the district. And um I have heard wonderful things about STAR three sixty um as being a great match for our EL learners as another tool to really assess our students and be able to get our students um the extra support um and really hone in on the skills that they need to move their language forward. Okay, um so the next uh piece I wanted to speak about was the recommended minutes of instructional time. So um these, the, there are recommended minutes of time, these are not required amounts of time. Um our lower level students who are still acquiring um language levels, one, two and three students. Um those students are the students that have an access score of about one point oh to two point four. Um those recommended minutes are two to three periods, no less than forty-five minutes per block um of direct ELL instruction daily. Um and then it moves up from there. We've got levels three, four and five students with an overall access score of two point oh to two point five um and higher, at least one period, um no less than forty-five minutes again for a block of time um of direct ELL instruction. Um these are recommended blocks of time, minutes of time per day. Um we do not, um we do not make those required um recommended minutes because, to be honest, we just really, at this point, we've got, we've had an influx of students, um you know, and we don't have the staff to um to really get to the minutes that are recommended. Um I will also share that not every district does. A lot of districts, districts struggle with this exact same thing. Um even your larger communities who have more staff. It's, our L learners are a little bit different. Um as far as um in regards to students that are on IEPs and special education, th- those are requirements, these are recommended minutes, but the research shows and we have found that obviously, the more time that you spend um working with students and really immersing them in the language, they will learn the language quicker. So we, you know, we do like to um attempt to get as many minutes as we can with our students that are at the levels that um that require the most assistance. So um the next piece we wanted to have was, we do have some staff here um who have been kind enough to wait in the wings and um talk a little bit about the instructional strengths and some of their experiences at the elementary, middle and high school level. Um so Lisa McManus is one of our ELL teachers. She's an elementary teacher. Um she's currently in the Remote Academy, working remotely with our L learners. But um she's also worked at Plum Cove and she's also worked at East Gloucester. So um without further ado, Lisa, would you like to take the floor and share some of your fantastic experience?
Thank you, Chris. Um not Plum Cove, West Parish.
West Parish, sorry.
It's in, it's in my blurb too. So um, so my name is Lisa McManus. I've been working in the Gloucester Public Schools for twenty-two years. And I've been teaching English language learners in Gloucester since two thousand and fifteen. Um prior to this year in the Remote Academy, I taught English language learners at EGS in the morning and West Parish during the afternoons. But when our EL population at East Gloucester increased significantly, an EL teacher was hired part-time for West Parish and I was able to work full-time at East Gloucester. Presently at the Remote Academy, I have eleven students at the elementary level. Um this week, we had two new arrivals. And then I have five students at the high school um who needed some extra support. So I've been seeing them every day um early in the morning. Um they're the first block for us. Um in terms of instructional strengths, English learners bring a high level of motivation to their education. Um they bring, think that to learning the language, to being active members of the broader school community. Um language growth and experiences of success in these early years really does help foster perseverance and confidence that Ls will need in order to tackle more complex learning material, especially as they progress through the grades. In my experience, a lot of students who are arriving with little or no English, um because I work at the elementary level, have been in the lower grades, K through two. Um however, this can be an advantage because as Chris alluded to uh earlier, younger students tend to acquire the language faster, partially because um their brains are developmentally wired to do this, but also because they're less inhibited about taking risks and while learning in groups. Um so at this age and grade level, uh by participating in explicit instruction within small groups, we tend to see significant gains in students' listening and speaking skills. Uh learning this way does provide lots of opportunities to practice using language in meaningful ways, such as talking and then writing about familiar topics and experiences. Um with families of English learners, I have noticed a very strong sense of parent commission, commitment to education. They've been supportive of their children's education and take pride in witnessing the growth of their child's English skills. They know that these skills will open doors of opportunity for them in the future. Um working in the Remote Academy, it's been especially a pleasure to see how parents of young English language learners take the time to make sure their child is prepared for learning. Um to see how they support the development of important skills for learning and positive work habits, right down to helping them keep an organized workspace and taking care of their learning materials. I'm very impressed by that, especially with the little ones. Um also connected to student motivation, um we noticed that English learners are very eager to apply newly learned techniques and strategies that support learning. Especially in the beginning, those types of strategies that allow them to demonstrate and demonstrate understanding in ways that are accessible to them, before they really acquired enough language to write with increasing detail. So one example of um engaging strategy that I've used um with with my students um is called TPR and that's Total Physical Response. That involves acting out the meaning of words or acting out the sequence of story events. Students enjoy using TPR because it's fun. It gives them the opportunity to get up and move. Um for instance, recently, students were working on a unit from our REACH curriculum on all kinds of plants. So to teach some of the verb meanings, students acted out the action words associated with this unit, such as um grow, pick, plant, uh things of water, things like that. As active learners, English learners reap the benefits of a TPR activity because A, it helps with long-term retention of vocabulary and it also boosts comprehension of stories and other texts. Um last but certainly not least, um the one thing I appreciate the most is that English language learners bring something to our, something special to our learning communities. Uh English learners enrich our learning communities. They share the gifts of their own culture, their language, their challenges and struggles and adapting to life in America. And as well, they share their unique and varied experiences. So thank you very much for listening.
It's great. Thank you so much, Lisa. Great job. Um Lisa does a fantastic job with our elementary students, as do all of our L teachers. Um so we do have, um from O'Malley, we've got um Lynn Beatty, who I think she's still here. I think would like to share a little bit about um O'Malley.
I actually thought I would let Rob go first and then I would follow up if that's okay.
Abs- absolutely. Sure, Robert, you ready?
Yeah.
Great, okay.
Hello, everyone. Uh my name is Robert Nicholson. Um I'm an L teacher at O'Malley and also at Plum Cove. Um this is my first year at Gloucester. Um prior to Gloucester, I was at Tufts for four years and I was teaching in their university prep program. So I was traveling back and forth between uh Medford in China. Um and then I was an IB teacher, uh language and literature IB teacher in Bangkok before returning um home to the States. Um this is my first public school job and I couldn't um ask for a better community um to be a part of. So this year's been really, really challenging, but it's also been um a great experience and seeing everyone come together is uh is really powerful. Um so I just want to talk about two things. Um a little bit about the the language side of things, the language acquisition side of things, and then also kind of on the cultural and um emotional side of things. So um as mentioned in the slides, we have thirty-six L students at O'Malley. Um most of those students are um two and above, so they kind of have a foundation of English. They're bringing a foundation of the language with them. Um so what we do, we have some indicators that was mentioned, the the WIDA testing. We can see where they are with their reading, their writing, their listening and speaking. Um so we can kind of hone in on where their strengths are and where they may need help. Um but we also get that too through just our personal interactions with them. Um some students might be a little more shy and they need help with their speaking or or their writing. Um so being able to differentiate that and see where students uh need help and then apply that is is really important. Um and the main part I do want to talk about is kind of the work that um I do um or we do, Hannah Sargent and myself, with the other core teachers. So the students aren't with us all day, they're in um their core classes as well. So they're also um learning content in that class. Um so it's our job to kind of be in line with those teachers and to know what they're teaching, when they're teaching it. So if they're teaching a unit, let's say on, um they're doing the uh Gettysburg Address. There might be a language barrier in there, but then there also might be a a gap in cultural knowledge. They might not know um what the Civil War was or is or what did it stand for. So it's able to um be able to kind of use our time too to help them with with that aspect as well. So it's not only language, but it's also the cultural side of things um that that we might take for granted, like uh um I got tossed a curveball. They don't know what baseball is, they might not know what that means. Um so there's that side. And then there's also the the fact that most of our students are, they're relatively new to the United States. They've been here for about three to four years. Um and in like any new place, um there could be culture shock. So um they're in a new place where it's a new language, their their parents may not speak English. Um it can be really difficult for them. So we're also there for another avenue of support for the students. Um and we do a lot of outreach to the the parents as well, making sure that they're safe during everything going on right now. If they need help, if they have questions, um we're we're there for that as well. So that's what we're doing um at O'Malley. It's been a great experience so far. Um and we're seeing a lot of improvement in our students and the staff has been phenomenal, working together and uh really coming together over the last year.
Thanks, Rob. So I'll just follow up a little bit. Um uh Rob, both Rob and Hannah Sargent are two teachers, um along with Karra Ummaghar, who's our intern from the United Way, do a phenomenal job, both with direct instruction with our students and then also trying to help coll- collaborate and coordinate with our kids while they're in classes. Um some of the things that we were doing school-wide are are hopefully enhancing that work. Um we've got a focus on universal design for learning that that really um brings to the forefront the 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 need for deliberate planning for different ways for kids to access instruction, layers of different kinds of resources that hit different modalities and different opportunities to prevent, uh to present products. Um so you know, in the thought processes that go through as teachers are working on this to make sure that they've got a diverse opportunity for kids to engage with each other. Um one of the best ways for kids at this age who are learning language is to engage and, you know, to have social engagement and be able to use their social language to develop their academic language. It's a little tricky in the pandemic, being six feet apart, but teachers are working hard to figure out ways and to provide opportunities for those kinds of engaging um activities to happen. Um you know, in terms of planning, one of the things that's a a large focus is vocabulary, development of vocabulary and thinking about what vocabulary is more academic, um what specific vocabulary kids need to understand the content and the skills that they're working with. Um as an example, most recently, I've been working in data teams with math and English. And um as they plan lessons for interac- interventions, they're thinking about those tiers of vocabulary and really deciding which words are essential for kids to know so that they can figure out how to make sure that they explain those concepts with added visuals or video um or different repetition um for for all the students, but thinking, keeping in mind primarily um the L students who may not have a context, as Rob mentioned, for the the concept that's being discussed. Um you know, a great example of that today, I was in a meeting with sixth grade English teachers where they were trying to think about how to go about instructing um narrative literature where um there are different perspectives or different voices brought into the situation. For example, a story told by different characters and how that changes. So one of the suggestions was made was, you know, simplifying it in some ways as an introduction to bring in fairy tales. Um because they can connect fairy tales to other cultures, tell the same story, introduce the concept in a way that um ideally, they're finding fairy tales that relate to the kids' cultures who are in their classes and they're able to expand upon um and and make that connection because that commit, connection to the home culture is so important for us. Um so there are small things like that going on um a a lot of the time as teachers approach their work. Um you know, and and even even among each other, um one of the teachers today shared a Hindu healing prayer with our faculty. Um so different people are looking for resources to help expand our own faculty's understanding of um how different cultures face different How different cultures face different experiences, their approaches. And thinking about where our students come from and and the cultures that they experience at home. Finally, I just want to make a mention of the work that in addition to to Rob and Cara and Hannah. Our guidance counselors do a phenomenal amount of work. You know, developing understanding of the cultures of our families and also sharing that information with our teams. Pursuing students who maybe aren't. Engaging in school the way we'd like them to, to make sure it's not a language barrier that brings them in and to to understand what we might be getting in their way. So that's an important aspect of what happens among the staff is, you know, making sure that the kids can connect.
Great. And then I'm, we're moving on to the high school. So James Cook and Millie Zink. Well, help us understand how how high school approaches this. Wait, James, we can't hear you yet.
There we go. Thank you, Ben, and thank you, Christine, for setting the table and Sabrina for getting us started at the beginning of this. When Ben told me that we would be doing this. My team and myself, we were just really excited for the opportunity to put our English learners front and center for an evening with the school committee. It's really, the aspect of my time as principal that I'm proudest of is the work that we've been able to do. To create structures, build relationships, improve our teaching practices to meet the needs of our English learners. And it is also one of the great joys and areas of growth that of all that I've learned. From working with our English learners and their families over the years, I've been incredibly enriched. As has our entire school by this population becoming such a core element of who we are. As Gloucester High School fishermen. So this is a great opportunity for us tonight. So thank you for having us. I wanted to first, Millie's gonna talk about more in terms of stories about our students and her experiences watching. Students and our programming grow. I want to give an overview of our instructional approach and some of the structures that we have in place at Gloucester High School. So we've, over the last several years, we've created. Some significant pathways for our students by offering ESL one classes for beginners. ESL two classes for intermediates and then ESL three classes. English and literature, we call it for our students who are transitioning and also often taking a regular English class as well. In addition to that, in each of the major subject areas, we have sheltered English immersion classes for our students. These classes offer culturally responsive, age-appropriate and intellectually challenging grade level content. So students are getting the same intellectual challenges that their peers are, but in an environment. In which the teachers are using strategies that support their language development. So you saw Ben show earlier how many of our students at the high school level are language beginners. But intellectually, they're high school students and socially, they're high school students. And so our teachers give them things that are cognitively challenging and appropriate socially. And relevant to them socially while sheltering the language for them so they can access that curriculum. And they're still taking the MCAS, right, where they're still taking PSATs and you know, moving on to all the things that that the our other students are doing. And doing that through a sheltered English immersion approach. So we have a pre-algebra class. That's sheltered English immersion and MCAS preparation class, we just call math, SCI math. We have US history one, two, and world regions and cultures. In sheltered English immersion and two levels of life science, life science one and life science two. For our sheltered, you know, sheltered English immersion environment. Our teachers are also trained in sheltered English immersion in the elective areas. So you know, wherever teachers are taking their electives or involved in our vocational program, so JROTC, the arts. Are for vocational areas, the students are experiencing the sheltered English immersion approach. So what does that mean? You know, in in terms of what you would see in the classes is pre-teaching vocabulary. So whatever the key vocabulary is. For a certain unit of study, the teachers are pre-teaching that vocabulary. So for example. In my very first year as principal. A very moving experience was me getting to see Millie Zink teach students. As soon as we're learning about the branches of government, positions in our government. And students who were in the United States for two or three weeks at this time. Were explaining, doing something very cognitively complex. They were using that vocabulary to explain the benefits of the balance of powers in our government. Checks and balances, right? And they were using this vocabulary. That was beginner vocabulary, but to explain this very challenging concept. And it's one of the moving things to hear kids talk about that. The the importance of balance, balance of powers in government, knowing their experiences, where they're coming from and how important it is to us in the United States. And so that's just an example of sheltered English immersion. Students use sentence frames, sentence starters. Again, to allow them to approach cognitively complex tasks, but with language support. So it's incredibly important. We draw upon connections to their background experiences as we heard. Lynn and Robert speak about earlier and some of the strengths that they bring from their first languages as well. And we're always looking for that I plus one, wherever they are now, and then having them reach a little bit beyond that, right? To grow in language. If the reach is too much linguistically, they're not learning and we don't want them stagnating with what they already know. So all of these teachers and all of these various classes are looking for that I plus one. What is that? Where's that challenge next? So I just, that just sets the table a little bit for our approach to instruction. And then Millie's going to. Who's seen a lot in her time at Gloucester High School and Gloucester Public Schools is gonna take us into more of a story about these students.
Thanks, James. Can you hear me, James?
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
So I'm the other ESL teacher at Gloucester High School. I'm Millie Zink and I. Teach the SCI US History one class. Because my academic background is in history and I have a history license. So I'm going to be telling you about a peer mentoring program I created with my colleague Carol Finacy. And I'm going to read you a little narrative I wrote about one student I'm remembering and I'd like to tell you about four successes, I feel. That we've achieved with the EL learners and to which the peer mentoring program has contributed. So this is the narrative frame I wrote and then I'd like to just tell you quickly about the successes. So come and take a look inside a beginner ESL classroom. We're on the third floor of Gloucester High School. We're in three three oh three and the sun is rising over the ocean. The students are learning the vocabulary of American symbols and government. At the whiteboard in the back of the room, Hector Rivera, a senior peer mentor. Is differentiating a game of fly swatter vocabulary. For the beginners, he'll just read the words and the students will race to be the first to make the phonological connection and swap the words. Statue of Liberty. For the advanced beginners, he'll offer a definition. It stands in New York Harbor and was a present to us from France. And fly swatters will swish and swap the answer. And then the most advanced students can take a turn at leading the game. And might say it is a symbol of hope for immigrants who come to America. And then you can see it and hear it from all over the room. These EL students are producing the academic language. That's valued in a classroom and serving as role models for these other students who've just arrived in America. But if you go back with me seven years before that day, the game I'm playing is over at Omele School and I'm leading the game. And I'm leaving the game because I work in both schools. There are thirty seven EL students at Omele and Gloucester High School combined and Hector is in a beginner classroom. Hector is in grade six. He is the youngest, smallest student I have ever taught. He's polite, cheerful, hardworking and competitive and he can produce less than one hundred words in English. Over the next seven years, Hector will earn top grades in his classes. He'll become so fluent. That he will apply to this peer mentoring program that Carol Finacy and I've created and he will thrive in it. Our peer mentoring program allows interested seniors to serve as role models. As mentors and small group leaders in ESL classes, in these SCI classes that James has explained and the world language classrooms. These seniors receive credits. They don't get graded. They receive credits and they receive the offer of letters of recommendation for a lifetime. The program has allowed us to run stations during long walks in which beginners can. Play vocabulary bingo, make illustrated books, conjugate verbs while they're throwing a tennis ball in the hallway. Learn to recognize the presidents who appear on our money and articulate their hopes for the future. In all of our classes, these SCI and ESL classes, the peer mentoring program. Has allowed us to differentiate instruction both up and down. Reaching students who can read and discuss a story as well as those who are just learning that Americans pronounce ah, a and e as ae and i. So only the seniors who demonstrate good grades and sound character, good leadership skills are eligible to be in this program. And we've been really so fortunate. We've had student leaders such as Kate Bovins and Alexis McLean serve in our classrooms. I can't name all of the students we've had who've been so fabulous. But we've also had the pleasure of watching some of my own students. So students who were my students over at Omele. Grow up and then come to the high school and serve as peer mentors. And so these would be kids such as Vincenzo Domeno, Emmanuel Tahada, Letizia Garcia Madrano and Icarus Souza. And watching these kids. Become peer mentors and be the leaders in the room has been so gratifying for us. We're so delighted every year with generosity. These kids show the humor, the kindness, the linguistic skills that they bring into our classrooms. So this peer mentoring program is putting some of our most successful and experienced students in the same spaces. With some of our most linguistically challenged and inexperienced newcomers. And in those spaces, they're learning to know and like and trust each other. So the peer mentoring program has, I think, helped us to achieve four successes at Gloucester High School and I just want to share those with you quickly. So the first one, I think, is that these EL students graduate. And that's the wonder of it all, that they come in with so little language sometimes and they're still graduating from high school. So James and I have talked about the fact that we are always going to have these really super students who rise to the top, no matter what the conditions are. So there's an example of this. We have a graduate named Karen Japchumba. Who was awarded a full five-year scholarship to a doctor of pharmacy program. She is now a doctor of pharmacy. And has written to me for a letter of recommendation because she wants to go to medical school. So Karen and students like her maybe don't need any kind of support, but most of the students we see. Are coming in with little to moderate amounts of English, especially the academic language they need to succeed. And those kids really need support so they can do that hard work and earn a diploma. The second success I think we're seeing is that. Both the EL learners and the peer mentors are writing to us for letters. And they're choosing colleges and professions that will allow them to serve others. So they're wanting to help children, to help immigrants, to work in underserved communities. So we're seeing young students who are looking to become doctors, social workers. And very gratifyingly, teachers and in certain cases even ESL teachers. And that's, that's a really good feeling for us. Third, I think I'm, I've asked a few of my colleagues about this and I think it's fair to say that. These EL students have made us better teachers. And what I mean by that is that earlier in my career, when I was teaching history. I would ask myself, do I need a graphic organizer in this unit? And now the question I'm asking myself every day is which graphic organizer are we using? Which visuals are we using? Which metacognitive skills are we modeling and which higher order thinking skills are we teaching? And here I really want to give a shout out to James Cook, who has really raised the bar on us here. And he's really created the structures and given us the creative license to make these kinds of programs happen. And the question that James is always asking and the question I think is the most important question to be asked for these students. Is how do we make these lessons linguistically accessible, but still cognitively challenging? So I want to thank James for doing that. And finally, I think that the EL learners have really helped us to make Gloucester High School a better school and by that I mean. A more flexible school and a more agile school. So I think that Sabrina and I teach the the EL learners, but it's really a building wide effort that's going on. And so downstairs in world language, Biana Robles and Celestino Basile. These young SCI teachers who are also fabulous, our ROTC teachers, our librarians, Samantha Taxera. All of these people are working so hard to create these safe spaces where kids can learn language and helping us. So that I feel that at Gloucester High School, we're really owning the responsibility of integrating the EL students into our school community. The kids have prompted us, but I think they've also inspired us to be more adaptable, to be more sensitive to cultural differences. To be more conscious of the skills that we're teaching. So that every year, these kids like Hector Rivera are arriving in our schools. And I think every single year we're called upon to be more creative in the ways we plan, more creative in the ways we teach and more creative in the ways we learn. Thanks, James.
Thank you, Millie.
Thank you very much, Millie and 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 everyone, Robert, Lisa, Lynn, James. Thanks for helping, you know, the work you do every day and the work your students do every day really come alive for folks here. We just have a few areas we want to touch on before we wrap up. And so I'll hand it back to Chris just to go over a few of these. And then I just want to talk quickly about also about sort of the level of of support also EL families need. So let me bring this up again here and then we'll get some questions and answers. We do understand that there's a. A storm coming and although I think I'm the only one who's not at home. And that it's also a late night, but want to just wrap up with a with a few more things. So Chris, if you can just talk about some of the challenges that the that the program and our teachers and staff and students are facing.
Thank you so much. And thank you, everyone, for for speaking on behalf of our our L learners this evening. So yes, I did want to talk a little bit about our instructional and our program challenges. We do have some staffing limitations, which does again, make it difficult for us to meet those recommended minutes that would really. You know, kind of catapult our students to the next level of language proficiency and learn the English language quicker. Also, we, up until this year, we did have, we did not have enough textbooks for all of our L learners. So we had a lot of sharing going on. And this year, because of COVID and the social distancing and the health and safety guidelines, we really had no choice. And we did buy some books and we were able to get some additional supplies. So we had a lot of very happy L teachers. And we were thrilled to be able to provide that, those resources to our to our students as well. Looking at some other things, a need for increased staff, we do know. You know, it would be what, it would be wonderful to have additional staff so that we could have smaller numbers of students in classrooms, whether it's in classrooms, doing some. Push-in sessions to get our students proficient or even some pull-out sessions in smaller groups. More staff will be very helpful. Also bilingual staff, very critical. It would be great if we had staff that could speak. More of the language of our students that we're seeing every day. Teachers that would be proficient in Portuguese, proficient in Spanish. We're seeing a great need. And not having all of our EL staff bilingual, you know, is difficult and sometimes is a struggle. So that is one of the key things that would be fantastic for our programming. Professional development, we all know, you know, as a rule, the more professional development we provide to staff. It just makes us all better educators, better teachers and we're able to work and, you know, provide. More experiences for our students. And and lastly, the need for a bilingual family liaison. COVID has really shown us the need for this. I can speak to my own. I can speak to my own, just working with our families at the time of registration when they're coming in. You know, it's not just the registration. It is so much more. You know, our folks are coming to us with various needs, whether it's employment, employment assistance, it's housing, education, food insecurity, employment, health, wellness. We really are doing more for our families because they really need additional support, almost wraparound services. You know, and we really are here to provide those resources, and they are so grateful, and our families are so thankful. You know, and it's just, it's, it's eye-opening, but it's also fantastic, the level of appreciation that we, that we get from our families, you know, when we are able to help them out and support them.
Great. So, and then...
Sabrina, yep, I was gonna say, I think Sabrina wants to speak a little bit about this as well, which would be fantastic.
Sorry. Hi. So, um, so this is my first year teaching as an ESL teacher at the high school. Previously, I was an instructional assistant in four classes and basically the advocate and liaison for all the EL students and their families. So some of the responsibilities I had was helping with guidance registrations and college preparations, helping the deans with disciplinary issues, helping the nurses in health center, parent outreach, providing them with community resources, and basically everything and anything my students needed. Because the majority of our students are Portuguese and Spanish speakers, and most of our students, as you saw from the graph, are Level 1, so meaning they are coming in with little or no English. So because I do speak Spanish, Portuguese, and Italian, a lot of the students trusted, and parents trusted in me to help them in all these aspects. But this year, I took the position of ESL teacher, but I continue to fill the gaps that still exist. So we do need the additional support at the high school. Some of the things that is awesome about working with these families and living in this community is that seeing them downtown or anywhere in town, they feel so comfortable just coming and speaking with me and asking about school, how their kids are doing, and all that kind of stuff. One important thing that we need at the high school is behavioral health, accessible in their languages. And something I was able to do with a mother who reached out to me recently was to connect them with the Gloucester Family Health Center, which does provide behavioral health services in Spanish and in Portuguese as well through translator. So that was a really important connection that we made. As Millie and James were saying, it takes a village. Our SEI teachers are awesome. And last year, class of 2020 had one of our largest EL cohorts to graduate in a very long time. Watching those kids walk across that stage, you know, Kathy Clancy knows it's one of the greatest things you can witness. And amongst those students, we had NHS members, we had a Northeast Conference Most Valuable Soccer Player, and we had a future math teacher. All these kids, I think every one of our EL students applied and were accepted to college, which is an amazing feat. Many of them were members of JROTC, and they learned the values and skills needed to work in our community, and they give back. And by giving back, they come back to the school and they actually speak to our EL learners and tell them about all the opportunities available to them when they graduate and if they stay in school and graduate, which is the biggest challenge, and it's one of our, all of our goals, is keeping them motivated. You know, and what is the motivation? Getting a better job when they get out of school? Because again, we're dealing with young adults that, you know, they have responsibilities larger than, you know, young kids. Unfortunately, they have to work. A lot of them have to work, and a lot of them are caregivers. And they're the ones that have to speak the English for their parents and be the communicators. So communication with the parents and guardians is key to keeping them enrolled and succeeding. And just as it's new for the students, it's new for them as well. So having someone they trust, and especially someone that speaks their language, is just, it's very important. So, like I said, many of us are working hard to fill the gaps, but it's not sustainable. So with the continued support of the school committee and our administration, I know we will see many more successes with our EL students at the high school, well, in the district.
Great. Thank you so much, Sabrina. And just to wrap up, really appreciate that because I know how well you and our other EL teachers know our, know our EL families and also and support them in so many different ways. And one thing we've seen this year, certainly, I know the mayor's been working on this tremendously hard, is that many of our English learner families are experiencing certainly a disproportionate share of the hardships that many families are facing with COVID-19. And so, you know, that's between the student learning loss, obviously. We especially saw that in the springtime, and I think are doing a much better job on making sure these families are, and the students are connected to school, in school, and doing well in school. But also, these, as we all know ourselves, even though it may be in our native language of English primarily, these COVID protocols are very complicated. And a lot of folks on this call and throughout our schools and really throughout the city have been doing, been working tremendously hard to help our families who, who English is a second or third language to understand the protocols, understand health and safety guidelines. Much more, much more translation this year than any other year. And also, these families are, many of these families are struggling with access technology or testing or healthcare, transportation. So these are all areas that, that something like COVID really highlights some of the challenges many of our EL families have. And then we also would, would never, would also want everyone to understand that really even pushing beyond as, as Sabrina was talking about, you know, we work with other agencies and organizations in town to, and, and support and collaborate with them on, on our work to support EL families, immigrant families, and also trying to work now even more, you know, more coordinated fashion with all these groups, which hopefully will grow out of our community stakeholders group from earlier in the year, where we were just trying to try to get back into school. So I will, we will stop there. We'll get to the important questions and discussion you have for our folks here. But do want to thank you for your attention and for listening and, and for giving us the chance to really educate you, but also the community about some really important and really essential members of our, of our school community and their families. So happy to take questions or, or comments from the school committee.
I'll start. I don't have any questions because I think we have had a good understanding of, of the needs of this population of our students. But this presentation just absolutely opened my mind to so much more, the breadth and the depth of what we as a district are providing. The numbers alone that show the kind of explosion of this wonderful richness that's been added to our community of families and students. I remember a few years ago, someone wrote an article for the Gilnetter that highlighted, you know, a bunch of, I don't remember if it was soccer players, but their background, and it just, it just brings tears to your eyes to know individual stories, where they've come from, what their dreams are, and how we help them get there. So I can't thank all of you enough. It is budget season. We definitely in the past have heard loud and clear that this is an area of need and will continue, you know, to know that, and we definitely hear you in terms of needing more resources, particularly as a student population continues to grow. But I'm so glad for the structure that's in place and for everybody that is helping these children and families so long as they, as they become even better members, bigger members of our community.
Samantha?
Thank you. I'll echo what Kathy said. I am so incredibly proud of, of our district and the work that you guys are doing, and I can't thank you guys enough for spending some time with us tonight. I have so many questions. I'm probably going to reserve them for an email, if that's okay. But the one thing that I will ask is, what has your experience been connecting these families with like CBHI services, so like in-home family therapy, CSAs? I'm just, I'm thinking more on the lines of the, the community wraparound services that you guys are speaking to, the need for that. And there are organizations that, that do that, but I'm curious if you've had any luck finding providers that speak the family's language.
So, so as far as, so we, we do put most of our families in, in touch with Gloucester Family Health. And through our former lead nurse, Cindy Junker, she gave us the name of some doctors there who could actually translate a lot of the immunizations and medical records from Brazil, from Portugal, from all of those spots, so that we can ensure that we have those documents. We also have, as I said, a good connection there, and they are able to provide us with some names and some contacts for folks that may need some additional services. We also work with Action Inc., and they have a list of providers that they've given to us, and we do put families in touch. Gloucester Housing's been great. Wellspring's been great. So we have, we've had some luck doing that. But, you know, it's like everything else, it's, it takes some time, and that's, you know, not always something that we have.
Sabrina, did you want to add to that?
I just wanted to say that it's challenging for a lot of the families because of health insurance with a lot of those providers. But like Christine said, you know, luckily, we do have the Gloucester Family Health Center, which actually does help them with the health insurance and stuff like that. So yeah, that, that's one of the big challenges with the families who are newly arrived and getting them those kind of services.
So Jonathan, may I just ask a follow-up question to that? So, so just trying to get them on health insurance, is that what you're saying? Or that they don't accept the health insurance that they do have?
Both.
Okay. So, so for, through CBHI for in-home family therapy and CSA, which is a, is a wraparound service, right? So they, they provide like community wraparound. They, they try to get all the providers together. That's only mass health. I know the challenge is finding a provider that speaks their language, but I know that Lynn and the Salem sites through JRI do have quite a few providers. So just to like take that off of your plate, I don't know if you've had that experience, but it's, it's a good connection to have.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Well, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight and explaining and informing us of this great, the services that you provide, the needs that you have, and we'll do the best we can, as always, to try to make your delivery of, of your job easier. And it's going to be a difficult year, but we'll do the best we can. But it was wonderful to hear about all the, all the stories. That was great. And thank you very much. And, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Thank you so, so much for being here tonight and staying late and enjoy the snow tomorrow. And try to take a day off, maybe. Just try a little bit, maybe half a day. Great. We appreciate all your efforts. And just to wrap up, you know, this really will be a sustained effort over time. And we need all to, you know, remain focused on it over time, over many years, and, and keep building. We've got a strong foundation in supporting English learners and their families, a very strong foundations community. And, and we can, we can build it even, even sturdier and even higher. So, but it's a great credit to, to these folks, you know, Millie and Lisa and Robert, James and Lynn and Sabrina, and then also many others who they represent that, that aren't, you know, part of our EL staff, but, you know, aren't here tonight because we've only put so many people on a Zoom and, and only keep here so long. But just really, just thank you for speaking up and speaking out. And, and I'm privileged to, to visit Millie's class, Sabrina's class, like I did last week, but also work in, in collaboration with all of you. So.
Also, the high school students, Ben, I mean, they really pull for each other. They really do. They really protect each other. And they, you know, they see the needs and, you know, there's a group of them saying, you know, what about the holidays? They can't afford that. And, you know, they, they've gotten holiday gifts so they can wrap them and they can take them home. I mean, it, you know, like I said before, we're very fortunate right now. Gloucester's unique, you know, we're, we're very good. We, we have great teachers and supporters and, but the kids. And so, you know, sometimes you'd be surprised. I think the kids are teaching a lot of the adults. This is the way we should be doing it, really. And so, yeah, I'm going to leave it at that, but if I insert footswallop, so I better shut my mouth, so. But thank you all. Like I said, there's a lot of opportunities out there, but you know what? Some of them don't understand that, and Sabrina and Mildred and Lisa and Rob all understand that, you know, sometimes when you live in fair, and Christine will know too, when you live in fair, you don't know who to trust. And when you trust, you cling. And it doesn't matter how many times you say, well, you can go to these places, they will not go. They cling to the people who they know, and they'll stay there. And then when that person will go forward and say, okay, let's go and let's do that together. And it's kind of hard with COVID time. But these fantastic team have doing, doing that and making sure that they, they can trust the next person and you can go to that next level. So that's very important too, because working with healthcare for 20 years, you know, it took me five years just to get someone to walk through the door. So they've excelled even more than I ever have. So thank you all.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, so much for your, your support of these families, our families that you do every day. I know it's a huge commitment of yours, and so thank you. All right, folks, you should go, you should go home or turn off and, and tune out. Run while you can. Thank you so, so much, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving along. We have committee reports. And the first one up is the program subcommittee meeting of December 7th. Joel?
Thank you. The program's subcommittee met. We had a full complement, and Kathy Clancy filled in at the very end, and Laura had to leave. Pull up. So if you had a chance to review the packet that was sent out, a lot of the slides that were presented are in the packet, which was very helpful. So we spoke about MCAS preparedness, as you know, although there seems to be a universal sentiment among teachers, students, families, and at least the school committee, that pausing the MCAS would be a wise move. Nothing official had happened as of the last program's meeting. And the report we received is that essentially, until told otherwise, the, you know, district will continue to make itself, you know, prepared for administering these tests under whatever guidelines are provided. In fact, the superintendent and principal of the high school talked about a very frustrating experience in which they had, you know, spent considerable amount of effort to making sure that the high school was getting in line with what it needed to do. And then the rules changed, and they had to kind of scrap what they had been working on. But nevertheless, they understand that's, that's the task before them. And so until such time as MCAS is officially paused, if and when that happens, the district will be ready to administer the test as required. We also received a really great report on English language learners and special educational learners during hybrid, hybrid and remote learning scenarios that we're in right now. You just heard a lot of stories about the ELL students. If you go through the packet and you see the slides there, they basically addressed each group with a what's going well and what are the challenges? And I think if you read through, although I wouldn't want to downplay the difficulty, the challenges certainly do not outweigh what's going well, what's going out, what's going well. Certainly, certainly exceeding the remaining challenges. And as we heard, many of the challenges that were facing these groups in the beginning have slowly but surely been taken care of. You'll see in several slides, they talk about challenges relating to remote learning itself, especially in some of the high needs groups, and that many students in each group have actually begun migrating into the in-person programs, which in and of itself, you know, really helps. I think you see like East Gloucester, nine students, three were remote and the two have already returned. So you're down to only one of the nine students in a remote situation at this point. So overall was, you know, it was a positive report. That was a very forthright report. They, you know, were good about letting us know what they still need to work on, but on balance, they're doing a great job. And then the last was just a quick, you know, broad look at the issues that would surround returning to a, a full day in-person schedule. This was put on the agenda, uh, not as a mandate saying, hey, we are going to do this, figure out how to pull it off, but more as, you know, certainly with the governor coming out and very, being very vocal about wanting students to be in school as much as possible. And I think with, um, the success we've had as a district in preventing thus far any transmission between students or between staff or from staff to students, students to staff, there is this, um, you know, this kind of belief out there that these schools are, you know, pretty safe spaces for the students to be. And I've run into at least a few constituents who have said, well, you know, the schools are doing such a good job keeping the kids safe. You know, why don't you keep them all day, right? Keep them safe for longer, right? You know, they're eating snack. Why can't they eat lunch? That sort of thing. And I thought was the most compelling thing that we heard from the administration was that it would not simply be a manner of flipping a switch and, and restarting, you know, the old schedule, right? Even I, you know, didn't appreciate how that, you know, regardless of whether we could do this, it would not be a matter of just replaying. You know, the, the most, the most recent successful school year, like the 18, 19 calendar couldn't come back out, class schedules couldn't come back out. You couldn't just play that play. You would have to rebuild school schedules. You'd have to rebuild transportation schedules. You'd have to rebuild lunch schedules entirely, because again, this wouldn't be a true return to normal. You would still have all these distancing guidelines and transportation or surrounding eating. You still have all the issues of additional staff required as you broke the students into smaller groups to keep them spaced. So, you know, doing it safely wouldn't just be a matter of additional manpower and, and kind of going back. It would really require a complete overhaul. And as was pointed out, given, you know, the uncertainty of the winter and where trends are going to go. A lot of that is being focused right now and making sure that if we have to go the other way, because there's, you know, another spike post-Christmas, that the remote option is robust and ready to be implemented, um, you know, with relatively short spin-up time. That being said, Greg Bach didn't say that this issue was, you know, um, off the table for the entirety of the academic year. And he said, you know, um, I think kind of a very optimistic look was that, you know, if things are going well in the spring, this would be something we can look at again, whether, you know, the effort, the massive effort to rebuild these schedules would be, you know, worth the outcome at that time. But at this point, um, the administration's not recommending any change, not recommending any return to a full school day. And they continue to focus their efforts on making sure that if we have to go more remote, we are ready to go in that direction. I think that was it for the subcommittee. Obviously, if anyone else wants to chime in who was there and I missed something, you won't be hurting my feelings.
You do have an action item coming out of this, Joel.
There we go. That's, that's right. Sorry. Um, if you want to take it up, I believe.
Let's take it up right now while you're, while you're on.
Sure. So if you, um, you saw the email from Maria, there was a resolution regarding the MCAS. And our, the committee stance, let me pull it up. So I have the full language. Would help if I was in the right. That's resolution. So the program subcommittee recommended to the full school committee to adopt the following resolution, which is quote, "Be it resolved that the Gloucester School Committee calls for moratorium on MCAS testing for the 2020, 2021 school year, so all children can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction." Further, the Gloucester School Committee calls for the students of the class of 2022 to be exempted from their 10th grade MCAS testing as well as the class of 2021 students who may be required to take makeup exams to be held harmless for the MCAS graduation requirements. For these students, the graduation requirements shall be determined locally by the Gloucester School Committee and school administration within the remaining graduation requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, end quote. And I so move.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second, everybody. This got sent out separately, I believe, from the, um, the packet. So everybody has it. Discussion.
This follows the language that was discussed at the MASC. It was modified slightly at programs to, I think, not reach and to use a little more direct language that doesn't have any, you know, any sort of perceived bias in it.
Melissa?
Just have a question. Is this, we're just the 10th grade MCAS, we're pausing, not the other grade?
I believe it's to pause the MCAS testing period, but to exempt, because none of the other MCAS testing has implications as to, you know, graduation requirements. So we just say the class of 2021, class 2022 would be exempt from the requirement to pass the 10th grade MCAS in order to graduate, but it would be calling for all MCAS testing at all grade levels to be.
Okay. I, I must have read it wrong. I, I understand now. Thank you.
Any, uh, any further discussion?
Can we just note for the community that we've received probably 38 or so emails in support of this resolution from community members? I think that's worth mentioning.
Well, I consider it mentioned then. I guess.
Thank you.
And you're right, but that's true. We, we have got a substantial number of emails. All of which were in favor of this resolution. Or the resolution that was prevented, presented by MASC. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, so what, what, what would this, uh, what would this do? Is this going to go to what? I mean.
It would go to the state Department of Education, I believe.
To ask them to stop this, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, and all right, I'm playing the devil's advocate here because I've got different kinds of emails and questions too. And I'm not really familiar with this. How are you testing your students? How do you know? How do you know that either the remote that we're doing or the remote that they're doing on themselves? That they're doing it in-home themselves? How do you know what level they are? Because I got complaints from parents that from March to, let's say, when we started school again, their children, it was like a waste of a year. They didn't do anything. They didn't go forward. Um, and so it's like, it didn't even count, but I mean, they still all passed. Now, how do we know what level they really are if testing? I don't know. I says, when I was younger, we didn't have MCAS, so we were fine. But I mean, to me, I, I agree with the teachers, I mean, but I, that was questions I said I'd ask it. So can anyone answer me that?
I get it. So, um, we do a variety of assessments throughout the year that, um, that shows exactly how to, as soon as they're progressing. Reading levels, it's math competency, um, uh, Star, we also this year have Star 360, which is actually showing us also has correlation to MCAS performance as well. So we wouldn't have this one particular test that, you know, particularly the, the one that is high stakes for, for high schoolers. We certainly have a really good handle and are seeing just the progress kids are making both any learning, any sort of anywhere if they were behind, but also the progress to make throughout the school year. So I, I'm very confident. I think Greg Bach would, would support me on this in saying that our teachers, through our various assessments at all levels, have a good sense of where our kids are and how they're progressing. We don't necessarily need MCAS for this year to do that for us.
Okay. Another question is, does that consider, you know, when they say your, your ratings of your school, does that count against ratings of your school saying, you know, you know, what level we are, what, you know, what school is the best? Does that come out with the MCAS scores?
As a piece of it, I will say that when the commissioner was speaking on this, or we're talking to Sabrina about it, he was saying that, you know, the school accountability piece on this is, is the least of his concerns, you know? So I, I think that's something that he can relax more easily. And I would, I would agree on that for this year as well, but, but that's something that I think that we, we districts might have a pass on either way. Um, and I think that, that's actually, if that's the case, it makes sense for, for students to be relieved of this, of this pressure as well.
Exactly. Thank you. And not for nothing, I was on a Zoom meeting with my granddaughter's teachers today with my daughter. And believe me, they know what they're doing and I am proud of my school and teachers because let me tell you something, they see the student better than we do. So I, I'm faultless, but I had to ask these questions. So thank you.
I was going to say, let's just let me elaborate. Um, I said the Department of Education, but I believe to waive it as a graduation requirement, it should go to the, our legislators as well, because that's, that's has to be legislated. So, so it'd go both, both places. Kathy, you.
Um, yeah, I just want to explain. So we intentionally left out the three-year, um, the MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees resolution included moratorium for three years and we did not want to get into what's going to happen next year. We were just trying to deal with the immediacy of the feasibility and the practical usefulness, I think, of any results this current year. It just, uh, I'm not sure what you would do with results after the past 12 months before they take the test. And also I think the, um, the advocacy by each particular school district helps the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education understand that districts really are supporting. You know, we just want to not do that this year. Um, we had heard from James Cook how much preparation the high school had already been doing to plan for this. I mean, it's just really, um, it's just a lot of work to administer these exams. It's just not really even feasible this year. So, um, so that's why I'm supporting this, that I just think this year it's, uh, it's a timeout on those assessments, but we are getting the reports on the other assessments that I think are more helpful and actionable anyway, um, during the school year.
Thank you.
Uh, any further discussion? Okay. We have a motion and a second and everybody understands the, uh, the resolution. So Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
And Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Thank you very much. It passes unanimously. And we'll move on to our other committee report of, uh, the, let me see, what was the date? Building and Finance Subcommittee Report of December 9th. Kathy.
Hey, uh, we met last Wednesday. Um, we went through our standard items. Um, one is the, you know, how we're doing on this current year fiscal, actual versus budget and everything is tracking similarly, um, as we talked about last month. There might be a slight, um, favorable balance at the end of the year of about $200,000 that hopefully will help us do some out of district prepay, if that's what the committee decides. Uh, and the city thinks that that's probably a good use of, um, of that money, if it does become available. That money come, that source comes from, um, you know, a few, you know, pockets of savings. In particular, our use of temporary staff or, or substitute teachers is down from prior years. Hard to find substitutes. Teachers seem to be making do because we just really are not having the ability to, to find as many substitutes. Nor is there as much need as before. Um, that was item number one. We talked about the budget calendar. We did change the dates of our departmental meetings. So everybody should make a note that sorry, we will be meeting with departments on January 7th, 11th and 12th. So that's, uh, the budget calendar. We got a report. Morris, Morris, we got a report from, um, where we're at with the HVAC work. There's wind, there's everything going outside that must be.
He's got to go to the bathroom, let him out and take a break.
I think it's the coyotes, the wind.
He's telling you, your budget's full of it. Go take a break. Take me out.
So we, we got an update from the HVAC work that the DPW has been doing, all the ionization systems are in. They are on top of all the air filters and the parts and pieces that are needed. We're quite pleased that everything that is, um, you know, that we had hoped to happen has happened, uh, in a really efficient and, and thing. And once again, I will thank the Department of Public Works and the city administration, um, in particular for really working to keep our kids and get our kids in the safest environment possible as well as our staff. We could not be more thankful for the investment and, and time it's been, uh, on the part of a lot of your staff on the city side. The one item that came out of it for action is to amend the storage contract or, or, um, uh, because we need one more room, we, for storage items mostly from the preschool belongings, I believe. So we have an action item to amend that particular, um, agreement. So, and that agreement is in our packet. Uh, so I will make a motion to, um, that the Building and Finance Subcommittee recommended to the full committee, the approval of amended lease agreement regarding the storage space. And I so move.
Second, um, is there any discussion? Joel?
And just for the record, that building is empty. Those rooms are empty. We are in a pandemic. This is to help out, you know, students. I just think it's unfair that this church worth billions of dollars is charging us money to use their empty classrooms. So I'm voting against it.
Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
No.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Present.
And Ms. Watson.
Yes.
It carries four in favor, uh, one opposed and one present. Uh, thank you very much. Is there anything else on BNF? No.
That is it. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move on to our remaining action item, uh, that we haven't taken up, which is the acceptance of the Early Childhood Targeted Special Education Program Improvement and Safety Grant in the amount of $3,795 and I so move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
And Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Okay. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to discussions on communications. Uh, East Gloucester Veterans Memorial, uh, school building project update. Then you want to start? You're, you're muted though.
That's better. Great. I'll give a few updates. Um, come on, here we go. All right. So from the building committee meeting, uh, we'll just remind you of the upcoming building committee meetings and update from last week's meeting. What we discussed, uh, on this, actually on the ad hoc, ad hoc subcommittee on communications was better connection and information from the building committee to the school committee. So really to keep, it was requested to keep the school committee better informed about the work of the building committee and the project. So this is our first step in that. In that, uh, commitment. Second here. So, uh, just a reminder, these are the upcoming dates. We had one meeting yesterday, which I'll tell you about in a moment. And, uh, second Thursday of every month, but then you'll see in March, we have a whole bunch of meetings because at the very end of March, we have to do the design development submission to the MSBA. because at the very end of March, we have to do the design development submission to the MSBA. And then this is the schedule you've seen before, um, you know, working towards breaking ground um later uh um uh in the fall, and then construction, you know, going on to in 2023. Um, but a lot of the work now is just about getting ready uh for it. In the, on this, uh, last week's building committee meeting, there are a variety of pieces, um, updates from the city council actions that included uh that they improved the loan order. So the the previous step on that in terms of funding was the um uh was voters, of course, approving um the debt exclusion override. And from there, then the city council has to approve the loan order, and that was approved last week. Um, and they also had to make make some modifications um to a home rule petition on Article 97. This was making minor language changes to ensure that um that people realize that you couldn't create open spaces Gloucester until the building was out of commission and wasn't being used anymore. The original Article 97 um uh legislation uh wasn't clear about that. Um, and then the other piece was that uh the softball fields, which we're all committed to, and the city council reaffirmed its commitment to um, you know, can't uh can't be built overnight. And so just to make sure people understand that that'll take um some time into 2022 uh season before that's built. Um, but the good news on that also was that um Joe Lucido gave an update um that uh Public Works Director Mike Hale and our Athletic Director Brian LaFatta met with the Women's Softball League leaders uh to begin work on scheduling um after June 2020. They'll have use of Meadows Field until through June 2020, um, and then we'll be using City Fields. And so working now to make sure that they have field secured for their whole entire schedule. And then Mike Hale also announced that uh there's an RFP out for designer for the new field for that project. So that's already underway, which is great. Um, and beginning that process, which is which is good. And um just uh always want to make sure folks understand and 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 realize the commitment the city has to 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 that field. Um, another piece was helping the building committee members just understand that uh that we're going into the the new phase, the design development phase, after finishing the schematic design phase. And part of that was helping them understand the difference between those those phases and the level of work. This is an example. This is not our school, but this example of what you would see, or what we saw actually in the schematic design level, which is you see these outside elevations, which are, give you the basic picture and out and and layout of the and look of the building. Um, but it's sort of, you know, uh, from afar. Um, and then also the, you know, certain, uh, it's not basic, but sort of floor plan. Um, and what happens, what we've already done, as you know, is the floor plan is essentially set, and the adjacencies where each classroom are set, and that happens, that's all already done. What we're moving towards is this level of 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 design, architectural drawings, where you can actually build something from them. Um, so you can see just the level of detail is in order of magnitude, um, uh, you know, more. Um, I've heard it talk about, um, and if you go from this schematic design, there's the number of the drawings are this much. And then when you get design developed, the number of drawings become, you know, like, you know, this much, you know, it's just a complexity level uh that is that is uh much, much more detailed. Another way of looking at that is you go from sort of drawings and um and and concepts to actually picking out, you know, paint colors and and furnishings and not furnishings, but but um uh, you know, finishes and tiles and floors and that sort of thing, and window casings, that sort of thing. So that all happened to design development, which is essentially going to happen over the next, you know, three months plus. Uh, and so that's where we are now, and that's really when things start to um go from drawings to actually uh looking like a real school can be built from it. Um, another piece that happened at last week's uh building committee meeting was two subcommittees were um named. These are official official subcommittees of the building committee. Uh, one is for interiors and one is for exteriors. Um, and what each of these committees, their job is to review options presented by the designers. Um, so example, for example, we had interior subcommittee meeting today, and so uh the four of us were there with two of the folks from Doran Whittier uh looking at, you know, we saw uh colors of linoleum, colors of flooring, colors of walls, uh, you know, design, color palettes, that sort of stuff. Um, and uh Amy Pasgrale and I had a little fight over red, but that's okay. We got past that. Um, she apparently doesn't like it. I do like it. It's all right. Um, and essentially, the committees, these subcommittees winnow down the alternatives of from a lot to just a few, and those go in front of the building committee. Um, those also, those sort of um narrow range of choices will also be seen by the school community as well, the um, you know, the staff, and we'll get some input from them on on those as well, or at least allow them to see what's being considered and see if we can get some input as well. So they'll be involved to a certain degree also. So those are two subcommittees. Uh, we also launched, I launched a uh, which is a communications group. It's not necessarily part of the uh building committee, but it's helping advise me on how to make sure we're communicating not only with the school committee well, but also with the school communities well, East Gloucester and veterans, and also the broader community. Um, everything from revamping a building product website, um flyers, mailings, uh bolt, you know, uh bulletin boards outside the sites and things like that. So we're making sure folks are well informed and they're included and they're engaged. Um, so a few of us are helping with that, uh, including a couple of building committee members. Um, and then the last piece, uh, there are three new um uh school building committee members replacing others who had to leave. Um, there are Adam Rizell, who is um a member with construction experience and also happens to be East Gloucester uh in O'Malley parent. Um, I think O'Malley. And then um Katie Eunice, uh, parent of East Gloucester, a student, and then Jameson Manning whose name I continue to misspell, I believe, um, who's a parent of Veterans Memorial. Um, and the the last piece here is we helped them understand a little bit more about the school building committee's role. And while the MSBA doesn't uh provide too much detail on it, other than um talking about the different phases they're involved in and um how they're sort of, they're overseeing um those different phases. Um, and then who the type of people um that should be on the on the committee. The city charter does have a little more uh detail about that, which is a general oversight of design and construction, uh providing input um in the direction of the project design, and then also approving changes. So they are, I mean, as a decision-making body on this, which they've been operating as. Um, but then also, I think Jonathan and in your package, John is going to explain a little bit about a little more about the school committee role, school committee's role in relation to uh building projects and the like. So um, that is the last page of your packet. And Jonathan, if you want to.
Well, um, Melissa has a question.
Oh, sorry. Let me um, just stop the share so I can see her.
So um, first, I just want to say it was really, I I got to watch the meeting, and I didn't get to see it in real time because I was not available, but I watched it later today, earlier today. And I was happy to see um the new members and just wanted to say thanks and thank them for coming on board. Um, it seems like they're um a great group of people and highly qualified. Um, especially the one that has the construction background, who's a general contractor. Uh, but my question is, um, when last time when we built West Parish, the school committee got the option or the ability to view the materials that were being selected. And I'm wondering if we're going to get to do that again as well. I mean, I understand it would have to be by picture or presentation and not in person, but I'm curious to see the materials that are getting picked out and the colors and giving the school committee an opportunity to respond to those selections. So I'm wondering if we're going to have the ability to do that with this school project.
Melissa, can you just help me understand just how you guys did it then? Like, did you go to a place and see them? Or just 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 help me understand how it was done, so I know.
So they, we were, we were meeting, um, I believe it was at um Blackburn, and they brought a sample of the materials in and showed us the color palette. Um, like when they said, you know, the wood is going to be this color, these are the colors of the hallway, um, things like that. So they, we were actually able to go up and um touch and see the actual colors and the um textures that were being used. And like I said, I know we can't just likely can't do that in person now, but at least if we could get some sort of um presentation or or a slide or something that just shows the color choices. Like, I'm hearing you don't like red. Well, red is a primary color. I would expect that to be in a school somewhere. So um, just wondering, those type of conversations that are going on. I know as a school committee member, I'd like to hear um the results of those conversations and be able to get feedback if we think it's necessary.
Kathy.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I just want to um um go back a little bit. The building committee last year did a visioning exercise where people were all welcome to come, the public and everybody. And so during that, it was kind of put sticky notes on what the look and feel might be, like, what what does it feel like? What's the color palette? What's the, you know, what do, you know, how how does it feel? Like, no one picked primary colors. They all picked kind of more colors towards um a nod to the to being, you know, the ocean and the natural environment of Gloucester and the sunset. So um, what is being presented to us is based on that particular visioning thing. Um, and I think it would be really helpful for Michelle sometime in January to present to the school committee. Um, you know, what direction um everything is kind of, you know, that 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 they're doing, because I think it it's a great way for the community to be brought along, um, and for you folks to understand. Um, I think some of the pros and cons of, uh, not the pros and cons, but why certain materials are being discussed or or suggested by the designer. Um, because we, you know, I said something today like, okay, that's wood. Is there a composite that might be less maintenance? And she said, that can't be wood because that's um structural. Uh, but this is a finish that get this over here, this is a finish that gets put on and looks like wood, but it's, I can't remember whether it was a metal coating or whatever. So so those kinds of questions, I think, are really important for you to hear and to be able to ask your own questions on that. Um, so I think it definitely should be on one of um Doran Whittier's first presentations to the school committee as as it progresses.
Great.
And we we did have a fairly um long discussion or or uh about as to how we could actually get the actual material someplace where people could view them. We talked about putting them like, uh, this was about not about the interior, but exterior, um, about doing, um, putting some samples either um at East Gloucester of vets of both outside the doors and not just for the school committee, but for also for parents and the staff. Um, and they're working on that. I think they have a couple of dates um set for the first of the year. Um, where they will set things up in the gym and make it available on a day that's kids are not there. You know, so there's there's some, they've got to work that out, but they're going to have to have it. They're going to try to have an actual viewing of of the actual materials at some point. Okay, any other questions? Um, I'll just move on a little bit to to tomorrow's meeting, uh, not um assuming that internet still works after the snowstorm. Um, the main thing that we're going to be taking up at tomorrow's meeting is what's called proprietary um uh materials. And there, uh, I think the best way to um describe that is to say, well, you know, all the the city uh buildings are all controlled by Siemens um controls for the for the HVAC. And the drawback of saying this is, we want Siemens controls is that they're the only ones, if they know, they're the only ones bidding, then um they um, you know, they just, it it costs you money. Um, so the, but the disadvantage of doing that is you end up with something that doesn't really work, is not compatible with what the systems you have. So that will be the the main discussion we'll be having tomorrow uh afternoon. And it's not that we're going to make decisions about that. It's just going to be laid out what the issues are. I don't think we're going to be making any decisions about those until um the January meeting. But there there are a number of things like that. I mean, um, and like I say, that was the best example. That's the type of thing uh that um we'll be talking about tomorrow. Other than that, it's just uh invoices, and then we'll we'll get an update because the bids, the the RFPs uh for the swing space was responded to. And um, there'll be an update on that now. That being said, that comes into our next uh issue. But are there any more questions on the on the building? Because I I want to talk a little bit about uh the role of the school committee in building projects. I did send out snippets from state law as well as uh this um, the city charter and and I, it was almost no, there's very little um information on on M A S C's website, other than the occasional required vote. Um, and that being said, the 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 Sioux School Committee uh on the building project was required to approve the statement of interest. It was required to approve the preliminary schematic design, um, and it was required to prove approve the schematic design. But I can find no um further votes that are required by M it um MSBA um to uh from the school committee in the building project. Now, the swing space is different. Okay, the swing space um is um the RFPs has been responded to, and 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 Melissa and Kathy are on the committee. There were two responses, one from um St. Anne's and one from Pathways, and um they're in the process of reviewing those now. Um, and they'll have to grade those and I I think you're you're planning on a site visit on Friday. Is that correct? Yeah. Um, and and at that point, they'll make a recommendation, and and that recommendation will have to be approved by the school committee of the site. But after that, after the, after the, after we approve the site, um, my understanding is that it's then a city project to, well, they're going to negotiate the lease with whoever uh is the successful um applicant. And the and the RFP basically was asking for a turnkey sort of situation where where they would do, um, you know, the 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 space would be ready for kids to move into. Now, if in the negotiations with with um either of the applicants, whoever's successful, they come up with a deal where the the city is required to um do some of that work. I believe the um oversight of that would fall to the DPW. So that's that's what I know about the swing space as far as I I sent out the laws. We have a couple of lawyers here that probably have a much better understanding of law than I do. Um, and uh, but that's my understanding. So is there any any further questions? Before we go into or any other um issues we want to take up before we go into um executive session uh to discuss negotiations. Seeing that, I would just like to um refer, this is something that's is relevant to the school committee and relevant to the building project, but I'd like to refer to BNF um for the first of the year to look to look at um the costs involved of having reusable um plates and 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 silverware uh in the new school as opposed to disposable um stuffs and because that is going to be a decision that uh is going to be come out of, you know, the school, they will design it around what the school's priorities are, uh, whether we, which way we're going to go. Right now, we throw everything away. And you remember last year, we we went through some a lot of discussions about getting compostable um throwaway stuff. throwaway stuff and, and we can get a report on how that worked, et cetera. Okay? Anything else? All right. We need to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations. Motion, the motion to meet into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30, A Section 21A, for the following purposes, an open meeting may have detrimental effect in the bargaining and litigating position of the public body and to return, oh, to open session only to adjourn. And we, the purpose is to do a strategy in respect to collective bargaining with the following negotiating teams. Ask me be the nurses and the administrative contracts. And I so move.
Second.
Okay. Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
And Ms. Watson.
Yes.
It carries unanimously and we will move to our, our executive session, Google Meet. And we will come back in the session only to adjourn. So you need to leave this meeting and go to the other one.